It's just one thing every day the guy driving to town. I would love it. I think, you know, because I would ride that. I would take the train all the way into the citizen and then drive around. I mean, I would see that.
Oh, I know.
Because that would be the same time as driving.
Yeah.
Yep. When I was in H P U, I used to eat a lot. But every time I was standing, I always stood.
Anywhere you want.
Okay, thank you. Meeting call to order, seven oh one. This is Ever Neighborhood Board twenty-three, Thursday, August tenth, twenty twenty-three, meeting at, starting at seven oh one. Um, before we start, uh, could we please have a moment of silence for all the fires and all? The things that's happening around this state and on Oahu Big Island and also Maui for all the loved ones that are being affected right now. Could we just have a moment of silence? Thank you. All right, we do have a quorum, one, two, three, four, five, six with John, old seven, John. All right. Okay, rules of speaking.
Hello, hello. Okay. Aloha, this is your community public forum. Your input and cooperation are really appreciated. The Ever Neighborhood Board is an advisory board and we provide fairness, integrity, and collaboration to all to increase and assure effective citizen participation and the decisions of government. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to raise their hand and when recognized by the chair to address comments to the chair. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments under two minutes, one turn per person. Those giving reports are urged to keep their reports less than three minutes and presentations under ten minutes. Please silence all electronic devices. The board will make, uh, will be making a good faith effort to provide the public with the opportunity to observe the meeting as it happens and an opportunity to provide oral testimony without a physical presence in the physical meeting room. Please ensure that your computer or phone is muted unless you are speaking. The board may take action on any agenda item. As required by the state sunshine law, specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. The two-thirds vote, eight of this eleven-member board is needed to add an item to the agenda. Items may not be added if they are of major importance and will affect a significant number of people.
Thank you. Introduction of board members. We'll start, I guess, some of the guys online. Go ahead, John.
Aloha neighbors, my name is John Clark the third, and I am currently serving as co-chair.
Thank you. Go ahead, Alex.
Hi, everyone. I'm Alexander Gauss. Thanks for coming out.
Uh, hello, everybody. My name's Liam Chin. Appreciate your showing up tonight.
Aloha, John Rogers.
Corey Rosenlee.
Trey Gordner, currently serving as treasurer.
I'm Mitutan Enes, and thank you, everyone, for showing up. Okay, you got one more online, Julie? Julie?
Right there.
Okay, when she comes on, she can say hello. Okay, moving on to public safety first responders, Honolulu Fire Department. I think they are battling a lot of fires out there right now. If they do come, we will, we can hear their report. Uh, moving on to Honolulu Police Department?
Hello, sorry.
Sorry about that.
We're here.
Oh, go ahead.
Hi, I'm firefighter DeMello with the Ever Beach Fire Station. Thank you for having me. Um, I have the reports for last month of July. Uh, the statistics provided below represent the confirmed number of incidences in the neighborhood, uh, board's geographical area for previous month. Should you have any questions, please email the H F T's Community Relations Office at H F T N H B at Honolulu dot gov. Um, last month's incidences for fires, we had zero structure fires, eight wildland brush fires, two nuisances, zero cooking fires, and ten activated fire alarms. Uh, for emergencies, we had one hundred and eighty-three medical calls, zero motor vehicle collisions, four motor vehicle, uh, crash collisions. Sorry, the first one was for, uh, motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians. We had zero of those. Uh, four motor vehicle crash collisions, zero mountain rescues, zero ocean rescues, and two hazardous materials incidences. Uh, the fire safety tip for this month is, uh, fire and fall prevention. Help ensure the safety of our esteemed elders. Implementing prevention and preparedness practices will promote independence and reduce frequency of injury or death from home, fire, and falls. Learn more at fire dot Honolulu dot gov slash fire and life safety slash Kupuna. Uh, stay in the kitchen when frying food and cooking on the stove top. Keep a lid nearby. If a pan of food catches fire, slide a lid over it and turn off the burner. Remember, the stove top and oven are not to be used for storage. Uh, ensure working smoke alarms are installed properly. Bed shaker and strobe alarms are available for hearing or visually impaired occupants. Plan your escape, uh, from fire based on your abilities. Keep your exit routes clear. Ensure windows and doors open easily and practice your escape plan. Uh, when the alarm sounds, get outside and stay outside. Call nine-one-one from your safe meeting place using a mobile phone. If you're unable to evacuate, shelter in place and stay near a window and call nine-one-one. Exercise regularly to build strength and improve coordination and balance. Ask a doctor about appropriate physical exercise. Be aware of your surroundings. Include uneven surfaces. Take your time when getting out of a chair or bed. Stand and get your balance before you begin to walk. Keep walking areas, pathways, and stairs well lit and clear of tripping hazards. Wear sturdy, well-fitting footwear and utilize handrails. And lastly, review your medications with your doctor. Keep an updated list of medications, medical directives, and emergency contacts posted on your refrigerator. Thank you.
Any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department?
Yes, I have one, Chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, just one question. Thank you for being here, and, uh, my question is, is when you have a crisis, something like that is happening in Maui, uh, how do the counties coordinate together? Does that require additional firefighters potentially from Oahu going to Maui? And how does that impact service in on Oahu? Thank you.
So incidences like that would be handled above our level. That would be handled more of the fire chief. Uh, it wouldn't be our station specifically.
Any other questions for the board? Any questions for the community? Seeing none, thank you very much. Thank you for your services. Stay safe out there. Okay, moving on to Honolulu Police Department.
Evening Chair, board members, members of the community, Corporal Pigment, Honolulu Police Department, District Eight Community Policing Team. Uh, I have your stats for July. In July, we had thirty-five motor vehicle thefts, twenty in our area, sixteen burglary, six in our area, a hundred and eleven thefts, twenty-seven in our area, uh, thirty-two unauthorized entries into a motor vehicle, and seven in our area. There is a total of five hundred forty-four, uh, citations issued, total of seven thousand five hundred sixty calls for service, uh, one thousand nine hundred twenty-six in our area. Um, the only other thing I wanted to mention is just to remind everybody that school's back in session. Uh, kids are everywhere. Please drive carefully. Um, as we all know, those kids on the bikes and the e-bikes and, and walking, they don't tend to pay attention when they're crossing streets, even driveways, so just be careful. Traffic is getting a little bit worse, especially with the, um, the speed hump that, that crosswalk run by, uh, E Lima, so just be careful. Leave earlier if you gotta get in and out on time. Um, and that's all I have. Hope if any questions, comments, or concerns.
Any questions for the board? Any questions for the community? Okay, seeing none. What about online? We didn't see?
Uh, as far as we see, there's nothing really to report. Uh, we did finish our culinary class, our twentieth annual culinary class at James Campbell High School on July fourteenth, I believe it was. We had twenty-five students. Um, was a great success. We are looking to do a twenty-first year. We are looking to start, um, some of our, our youth mentoring program activities. We're looking at probably starting our golf with the youth soon. Um, so we're doing that. And I think that's all I got for that.
Any question for the board? Any question for the community? I got one real quick. Um, just recently, we've, we've been seeing a lot of, I guess, accidents happening, coming into Ever Beach, around Ever Beach. Um, not including the fires all over on Oahu itself. Um, just today, I've noticed at least four officers coming in to Ever Beach. Did, were, were there any more officers put on in this area? I mean, added?
Uh, there, there weren't any more officers added to patrol side. I know the traffic division has been out here quite a bit, uh, with doing DUI enforcement as well as speeding and distracted driver. Um, so that might have been more the officers that you've seen that are driving around. You know, we, we're actually starting on the twenty-first, I believe. We're gonna be moving to the, uh, three thirteen schedule. We're obviously gonna be working thirteen hours a day, uh, basically to watch us. So we're hoping that that's gonna allow us to have more officers on the road at one time. Um, they might be a little bit more tired, but I think the four days off gonna help out. Um, so we're hoping that that's gonna help with some of the issues. Um, we are still asking people to, if you see something, say something, report it. If it's suspicious to you, then call it in. Um, what's suspicious? You may not be suspicious to me, but we'd rather come down and find out that, uh, there wasn't anything to worry about than come late and then, uh, we've ended up having to do a lot more work and, and some problems and stuff like that, so.
Thank you, Officer Piggin. Thank you for all you do in the community. You guys stay safe out there.
Thanks, and thanks for all the pig hunting, yeah?
You're welcome. Okay, moving on to board administration and planning. Um, a approval of regular board meeting minutes for Thursday, July thirteenth?
Move to approve the minutes. I second that.
Okay, the motion and second. Do you have a correction? Okay. Come up to the mic, please. Your name and the correction, please, and where, if you have the, the page.
Well, if I can remember the top of my head, but aloha, Tarar Rojas. Uh, I just wanted to correct the board minute in that. Well, one I know it didn't have my name, so I testified, but it was in the report section that I testified on, uh, certain agenda items. But the most important thing that I wanted to say is that there was, yes, a long discussion, but a very important discussion at our last meeting. So if you could please put out in writing, like word for word, or your summary of the important information that was given for, instead of, um, just putting C from this time to this time, it said words, it said like, public and community comments.
They, they said, um, they're not, they're gonna summarize. They're not gonna put word for word in the minutes, but you can see it on the video.
Yeah, in the summary, but, um, is that normal procedure just to say?
Yes.
Watch the video?
Yes.
Okay, so how do we get things in for the record on information that was provided in the summary version, a written summary version, instead of just sending somebody to the video?
It would be in the video. They don't have a written summarize version.
Okay, because I've been to other board meetings and they, they summarize, and past meetings, they have written out the summary.
That was in the past, yes. That's correct. Yes. Thank you. There is a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Oh. Okay, thank you, John. Motion passes. Okay, uh, moving on to rules of speaking revision. Yeah. So it was brought up that we want to change the, the two-minute comment period to one minute. Any, any, um, questions or any concerns about that? I need a motion for that?
I'd make a motion to discuss the proposal.
Is second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So just to clarify, it is one minute to speak on every item or every area?
Everyone.
Okay.
So if you read on the top where it says, keep their comments to under, uh, two minutes, it would be one minute. One minute, one turn, one minute, and then if they have any other questions, we'll go through the questions of everybody, and if they have another one, then we can bring them back up. Okay, any other questions?
I have a question, just to clarify, Chair.
Go ahead.
I guess with certain topics, they, they can, is there, uh, will there be times where it would be permitted to, for people to speak more than a minute, and how, how is that being addressed? Just?
Yeah, it would be a purview of the chair.
One more question is, uh, who's proposing this, or where was this proposed from?
Well, Alex and myself.
Okay.
Yes, because last, the last meetings that we were having were kinda, we kinda jammed everything at the end, and, you know, it started going and going and going. So I, I think it's more than appropriate for someone to give a, if they have a question, to ask a question, and he can get an answer. Now, if, if the question has another, a longer answer or a longer question, we can give them the opportunity at the end when the rest of the community has a, has their turn to qu- ask a question, so.
What, what would that look like to give them an opportunity at the end, can you specify?
If they come up again and say, I have another question. Now it's up to the purview of the chair.
Okay.
If you have another question, come up to the mic.
Because this says they'd be limited to one turn.
Yeah, one turn, but it's still left up to the chair.
Right, right, got it. Um, uh, is this a time for comment on it, or are we just doing?
We're still in comment, discussion.
Okay, yeah, one, yeah, one of my, one of my quick comments is, um, I think it's a little much to cut it in half. Um, I could support cutting, reducing it to a minute and a half, ninety seconds, but cutting it by half seems like a lot. Um, because some issues are quite complex and it's difficult. I do know some people have trouble getting to the question and getting to the point. But, uh, in this, the purpose of this forum is primarily for community members to share concerns and speak. So with that in mind, um, I'd like us to see how that works first with, uh, starting with, uh, ninety seconds, a minute and a half, and then see how that works before just cutting it in, in half.
Okay, go ahead, John Clark.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, notwithstanding what the previous board member stated, uh, I, I don't think we need to look at this on a percentage basis of, of cutting it in half. I think contextually, when you look at what has happened over the past year on the board, um, many of the community members, the purpose of the board is to, as he said, facilitate conversation, discussion, and, and open, transparent discussion among the community members. What has happened is we've had a very small part of the community that tends to disregard, uh, decorum within, within the structure of the board. And what many of you don't realize is towards the end of the evening, we are trying to cram in a significant portion of remaining, uh, agenda items, and that's not possible. Uh, and I think if you really think about it, if you're in regular conversation with someone, for example, I've been talking for, what, thirty seconds now? If you're in regular conversation with someone and it takes you longer than a minute to get to the point, you're not asking a question. I understand there's some preamble and some context that some people have to give to put their, to frame their, their question in a certain way. And that's fine, but what we've had is people just go on and on and on, and when, uh, when someone raises a point of order, when the chair asks them to wrap it up, they totally disregard it. So I suggest that we start with the one minute, and if we find that to be especially onerous, then we move, uh, in sort of like a ninety-second fashion. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Go ahead, Wayne. Wayne?
You're muted.
Can I hear you yet, Wayne? Wayne? Wayne?
Sorry, sorry, Chair. I was, uh, I was having, uh, trouble with my, my, uh, connection here. I just wanted to.
We're good.
Go ahead.
Okay, no, I just wanted to, uh, make sure you knew I was on. That's all.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
One more quick comment?
Okay, go ahead, Alex.
Uh, I just want to make a point that the whole idea of this is to be able to ma- to manage the meeting so we get through all the topics, because we keep getting cut off, right? And so we have a lot, people are staying here until ten-thirty at night. They're not getting a chance to talk. I don't think it's fair to those people. The idea is not, and that's why I was asking for clarification, and now we know it's the chair's option to, to let people go over, um, but you try to get in there, your comments succinctly, but the idea is so that we can actually manage this and get through the entire agenda, which has been a major challenge for the last ten months, so.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd also, um, I, I opened my trusty open meeting guide to sunshine law, uh, just to double check on the testimony. I do want to note, um, that I, I support this measure. I, I understand why we're doing it. I do hope that, uh, we get to a point where we're able to extend it back to ninety seconds or to two minutes to, to give the public a voice. Um, one thing I wanted to note about the rules for testimony is that boards can decline to accept public testimony that's unrelated to a matter listed on the agenda. And I'd like to further extend my support, uh, to the chair to use the gavel when he deems it necessary as well, um, in order to preserve the, the time of the people who have come out and, and wish to speak on matters.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. Call for the vote? Chin?
Aye.
Colin? Jamaica?
Aye.
Thank you. John Clark? Janet Dela Cruz? Alex Gauss?
Aye.
Trey Gordner?
Aye.
Wayne Caivi?
Aye.
Julie Reyes Ora? John Rogers?
Aye.
Corey Rosenlee?
Aye.
Mitch Tianis? So it's one, two, three, four, five, six, ten, ten. Pass. Okay, thank you. Rules will be adopted. Um, and, and again, we can revise it when needed. Okay, moving on to residents, community concerns, and community announcements. We'll open this up to the community and the public, so if you have a community announcement or concern, please step up to any of the two mics here. State your name, your concern, or your announcement. Okay, we're gonna do the, the community here first, and then we're gonna go online. Yeah, Uncle David, gotta lift the mic first. State your name and your concern or your announcement, please, or hold on.
Hello, bud, uh, Chair. First of all, thank you for everything you guys do out here. I appreciate your votes. To my political leaders in the back of me, thank you, and in the front, thank you very, very much. I get two, three topics I like bring up, uh, but I know I only get one minute, so I'm gonna be real quick. Domestic terrorism. Uh, here's a paperwork on what was done on twenty twenty to about hundred forty thousand people on the city bus and handyback. Get the chemicals involved, get the timing date when it was introduced, okay? That's for you guys. The second one is the resolution, uh, by Andrea Tupawala regarding, uh, something about essential workers. This goes hand in hand with this, okay? Only because, uh, as you know, the city bus is beyond essential. We did too many evacuations, okay? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Hey, my name is Monica Pangari Buon. Uh, quick concern, the fastest ever. Uh, I'm a coach for A Y S O, so for this season, and the park behind Keoneula Elementary School is so dried up. The winds are blowing all over. We're kicking balls and all the dust is going all over. I don't wanna have my kids play with masks for crying out loud. It's hot. So please, I don't know if it's Park and Recreation that has to deal with that, with the water system there, but please, I, I go to Geiger Park, and Geiger Park is not as bad. So if somebody can please deal with the water, whatever irrigation that needs to be done there, I appreciate it. Thank you.
That's the Keoneula.
Chair, can I ask for clarity here? Because, um, during this time, it's a two-minute is, um, for concerns, so it's just during, uh, comment periods after someone speaks. So this is a two-minute, um, period.
Yeah.
Slow down a little.
And what was your name again, real quick? Sorry. Yes. Monica. Okay, I'll go grab one. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Kenny.
Kenny LeFuma. Yeah.
Hi, my name is Kenny Liu. Uh, this is regarding the cluster on Pohakapuna Road. The draft of the final environmental assessment is in. It came in on, um, July eighteenth, and it's in the thirty-day review period. If they are granted a Fonzie, a finding of no significant impact, then it will be printed. And then, um, twenty-one to sixty days later will be the SMA hearing. That is the most important hearing for Ever Beach to try to stop this. It will be held by the D P P. Um, we can come out, give all our comments on why this shouldn't be done, especially from an environmental standpoint. Then it goes to the city council, where they generally have two meetings. If it passes the SMA, they still have to get a cluster permit, uh, which is issued by the D P P, but we really have no say in that. Um, real fast, this developer, um, said they were gonna come out in twenty nineteen, they showed up, and they said they had a presentation. It was for a completely different project. It was for a subdivision, not a cluster. Um, they said they would come back. Mitchell a- asked them to come back. They said they would. Um, they would come back when they had updates, and, um, they would come here regularly, and they never have. In a response from Senator Favella, the applicant wrote, um, well, Senator Favella asked them to come out and see, said that they've done, um, minimal substantive comments and actually no proactive outreach. And they replied that they will come out during the special management area. And I can only assume that they're just gonna come out guns blazing. They're gonna come out once, and that's the last time. There are no other meetings. So I'm encouraging everybody to come out. Um, I have, um, written through Augie a, a letter to the, um, director of the D P P, asking that they have an environmental impact statement done, but I don't know the outcome of that.
So when, okay, sorry. So the SMA are, if they, if they granted the Fonzie, it'll be twenty-one to sixty days for the SMA?
Twenty-one to sixty's for the, um, meeting, the SMA hearing.
Just make sure if, if that date is coming up, gotta let Senator Favella know, because
Oh, absolutely.
Blast out and let the community know as well.
Some people are receiving emails from me. Yeah, definitely. I'll be back. Yeah.
So may I ask a question that? That, how, how did you find out that they finalized the EA?
Well, they didn't finalize it. I've been in, in close contact with the DPP since the end of March. I went to a town hall, Mayor Blangiardi was there. I expressed concerns and he, he told the DPP or requested that they answer our questions and they've been great.
So what did you, so what do you mean, the July eighteenth, what, what was that day? How was that?
That was the day that the draft of the final environmental assessment came in. So they're in a thirty day review period right now.
Wouldn't that have to be a public statement?
Dialogue, sorry about that.
No.
We understand.
No, if, if the draft is passed, then it's printed in the ten, the environmental notice. Yeah, but it hasn't passed yet, they're in the review period for it right now.
Thank you Kenny. We'll try to keep us on top of it as well, cause you know how it slips through the crack. Thank you. Go ahead Alex, and then Senator will get to you.
I just want to check if, if you had actually sent the, if you had sent that, in that letter that you sent to them, did you, to the director, did you include that a resolution was passed by the board?
I did, I sent it in the next email.
Okay, next, because.
I actually sent her a copy of the resolution.
Thank you.
One very quick question, I'm sorry Kenny, did you say that the hearing has been scheduled or has not?
No, it has not been scheduled, it won't be scheduled until the FEA is final and I believe it's printed in the ten, the environmental notice.
Okay, thank you.
Senator?
Yeah. I wasn't gonna talk on this subject, cause we have other pressing moments, but I was in contact with him, he's very persistent. We had the mayor and DPP come out and the mayor did say, nothing can happen, it won't happen. The Fonzie that you're talking about, not after Franzarelli, the other Fonzie, the mayor also said and DPP said it's not gonna happen. They're not gonna leave it. So they're gonna go through the process, but I want, what I want this board to understand, the power that you guys have as volunteer board, is to make it clear to the developer that we're not gonna stand for twenty-two homes. On a sound, twenty whatever homes, over, over four, on that street and in that area. If you look at the surrounding, that street, more on that road, in that area, maybe six homes, maximum, single family, family dwelling. Not twenty-two. Our sewer systems is failing, our water system is failing. Again, our water being abused, you guys already know from Anilau that we don't have water. Our sewer capacity is a problem. Right now the city wants to make everybody go to the cesspool, right? Cesspool now, okay? How they gonna do that when my eighty-three year old auntie cannot pay for the hookup? They're gonna pay fifty million dollars to put in the.
Point of order Chair.
Go ahead.
This is not anything to do with what we're talking about right at this moment.
It's a community concern, you wanna spend fifty million dollars, is that a concern to you brother?
No, no. Okay guys, settle down, real quick.
No, I talked about a concern.
No, no, this is a resident.
Do not want this, board members.
We understand.
Ever States do not want this, I want you guys on it, like a haunted.
Yeah, this is right now, residents and community concerns.
Voicing my concern?
Community announcement, yes.
Okay, I get my own concern, it's about the, the Gentry project. You guys, they came beside you guys and showed you this project. The project that Debbie Looney told me, Ed Sniffin, Representative Marioshi, that they wanted to do workforce housing for teachers and first responders, okay? And they pulled back that and nobody here had even said anything about that. They wanna give it to a tennis, a tennis court, and nobody playing tennis, they playing pickleball.
Thank you Senator.
All right.
Okay. Go ahead.
Aloha Tara Rojas, so my concern really is in this day and age where we're teaching our children, you know, about bullying.
Sent you the text.
There's no age to bullying. So it's kinda disconcerting when you come to a community neighborhood board meeting and you're kind of feeling like the reason why it's going from three to two to one. So my, my question is really, is this neighborhood board meeting really just an update? And not necessarily neither follow-up regarding sewer system, water system? You know, I also do try to inform the community as well to get involved with our water situation, our water and our sewer. And we've been asking, I think this is the second meeting now, from a while back, where we should really invite the environmental director in order of the sewer, about regarding our sewer and our water here, present, yeah? So I just wanted to say that and it's really not about like the loudest voice, but every voice should be heard with the same respect and heard and be able to discuss the issues at hand. Because Capilina is in our area and that deals with all of our water, mahalo.
Thank you, hey Tara, and just to add on to your, your, I guess your questions, your, I think your question is from last month, will be on the mayor's report.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Go ahead sir.
Hello gang, my name is Bryson Suciama, XL Sports Eight O Eight, I frequently use Mahico Park and the same park the young lady used Everpool Law. Past couple of years, you know, it has been very challenging with the condition of the field. You know, the field is dried up and we have thirteen hundred kids playing every Sunday. And now, now, now it becomes a safety issue here. Because the, the, the ground is drying up, the rocks are coming out and, and parents are, you know, and I'm, I'm there on the field, you know, picking up the rocks, I'm telling officials and saw the coaches and parents. Last year, we had a kid that had to have surgery because his knee was cut open, you know, just from falling down. Now he had to attend fifteen stitches. So, you know, we just, you know, asking for your folks help, you know, we can get the water that the field needs, the, the maintenance and we're, XL is here to support in any way we can. I, I bring dirt, I bring sand, I even tell the parents, when they leaving the field, all that excess water they get in the cooler, throw them on the grass. So, please gang, you know, you know, it's very, of the utmost importance that we get your folks assistance in that, yeah?
So that's Ever Mahico.
Ever Mahico, Everpool Law, I use Kahalu too, Kahalu Field. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
So I, I wanted, thanks for coming up for both of you, so we're, John Rogers and I and and Trey, we're on the Parks Committee and so we're gonna set up a, a committee meeting in the next month. And so we should, so this has been an ongoing issue, we, we were complaining about the park situation, the grass last summer as well and it's a, you know, here we have serious issues with grass tolerance to the, to the sun and all the, but then they plant grass and don't maintain it and all this. So it's something that needs to be brought up, so I thank both of you for coming up, bringing that. If you guys can attend that meeting, then we can think about like some kind of letter or approaching our representatives to get help and the park and just see what we can do to, see why they're not able to maintain it and do the sprinklers more often and things like that. So please, try to attend so we can formulate stronger strategies.
All right. Who's next?
Hi, Regina Companion, I'm the Ever Beach Little League president. A lot of our concerns is also same thing with the fields, there are terrible conditions, bathrooms are dirty, there's been a lot more homeless people out there. We've had a couple of incidents where some homeless person has actually gone up to our younger kids, I think was like six years old. We're trying to get them to go home with them. So that's a big concern and safety for our kids. Another thing is our Mahico Park, we're usually not allowed to use that field from July to December. We kind of feel it's a little bit unfair for that because like everybody else, all sports, everybody is year round, but that's kind of like our older division kids, so we're usually not allowed to open up that division for our older kids. And we find out that a lot of those players that are using it for football, a lot of them is from like Waianae, Nanakuli area. We feel that's unfair, it's like it's our community, we should have priority. We don't mind sharing as long as we maybe have a border of where we can use for the field. But we don't mind having like football or sharing it with soccer, that's not a problem for us, but we should be able to utilize that as well. I think that's it for now, I know there's a lot, sorry, it was last minute I started to come tonight, but thank you.
Okay, no, I'm gonna, I was gonna say this later, but there's a form out in the back, on, on the table, so, or even, no, that's right there, they have it on the table. So any of your concerns, put it on here and then NCO will forward this to all the representatives, senators, city, state, mayor. You know, not only, we're gonna be, you know, telling them this right here, going directly to the right people. Okay, ma'am, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Tasha Santana, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Ever Beach Sabres Youth Football Program as well as the Ever Beach Cardinals Flag Football Program, which is with XL. So Cardinals, we practice at Puloa District Park and you guys already heard twice, I think already about that park, as well as Acing Park. So I've been with the Sabres since they started back in twenty eleven and it's been just kind of ongoing throughout the years. So as Vice President, I hear from parents, I hear from the coaches every single year. But this year I see firsthand, because my six-year-old is playing at Puloa. And I literally every day gotta think like, how could I protect his knees? The rocks are crazy, but you know, it's like, do we complain? Because we don't wanna complain, because we're already strapped for park space. And we know when we complain, okay, we're just gonna say, okay, no, it's not safe for people, then what are we gonna do as parents in Ever Beach? We're gonna have to go Milaladi, we're gonna have to go Waipahu, YPO, you know? But there's so many kids out here. I own Santana Sports, so I see the kids come through for so many sports and I hear the same thing about these parks out here. So again, like Gentry parks, for tackle, they don't allow tackle. These teams are willing to pay the fees, but they don't allow tackle and it's already like overcrowded at those parks. So kind of sad that we cannot use our own city parks and we gotta look for, you know, elsewhere. And I know it's not an easy task, but just that there's more attention, more to it. I've been told over like the last ten years that Acing Park, they don't water because it's like on a reserve. But I don't exactly understand the whole thing, but basically they say, if there's no extra water in there, it's not gonna get watered and there's nothing you can do about it, but is that true? I don't know. You know, I'm not, I'm not in that line of work, so I don't know, so we're asking you guys for your help to see how we can resolve the situation for our kids out here, thank you.
Okay. Sir, go ahead.
Aloha guys, aloha Chair. Also member Augie, Representative Alcos, Senator Favella. My name is Cory Sunshin. I'm very heavy into the community, I hold a lot of events throughout the year for the people, for the kids. I also own Ever Beach Signs and Graphics. So I see many of you here, probably new faces. I hear everybody talking and all you guys going, yeah, smiling, drinking. The thing here is, we here over year, year, year. Your guy's seat is to listen to the people, right? To find a solution, right? To make changes, right? Why are we still here? I just heard one of you say, oh yeah, last year, we still had the water problem. I love to fly drones, so I fly drones all the time. I should take the picture because what you guys will see will shock you. From our side Ever Beach and when you go a little bit towards the other side, it's so green, it's like dark green. And here we are brown. I'm also with XL, my son has five teams, I also help my son coach. The field is horrible, do you guys have kids? That means your kids are in the community, right? Do they play sport? Yes or no? None, none of you shaking your head?
My name is Brad and I have a one-year-old.
Okay, great, that's great, but your one-year-old will be five years old and playing on the field.
One more coming though.
When we go to the park every Sunday, I go home, I blow my nose, it's red. All the homes around there take cracks because when they move, it blows in the yard. Why we don't have water to water our grass for the kids? I'd rather have my kids in the park than at home on the iPad, so that's all we have, the park, okay? I fought alongside Representative David Alcos for Ha Bush, Oniula, which I remember you was there at the meeting, okay? We have no toilet, I was on the news fighting for the toilet, because we gotta shit in the bushes. In the morning, the doodoo is gone from the mongoose, the toilet paper blows from the corner wind and wraps around our legs, right? There's no bathroom, until this day, there's no bathroom, but guess what? Five years ago, I won a bathroom. From Senator Menor, I mean Representative Menor and Kimberly Pine.
Cory, can you wrap it up, sorry?
I got timer bro, still yet.
No.
Okay, so listen, the bathroom was there for five years, nothing has happened. You didn't replace it with a regular urinal stalls, it's still there for five years.
You talked in the old bathroom.
No, the, the stand-up urinal.
Oh, the three, the two, the two portables, that's a half bathroom, half shower.
Right where the surface is, that's from me, five years ago, I won that. They came to me and they said, okay, we'll put it there, it's still there.
Okay.
So guys, just make the changes, man, you know what I'm saying? Listen to our voices, get in there, make the changes, that's it.
Thank you Cory, and, and again, we're an advisory board. Now, we advise the right people, what the community, what you're saying. We, we're, we're the voice for you guys. Yeah, so it's not us making the changes. So I just wanna, no, no, wait, wait, let's get through this residents community concerns before any of us comment, because if we go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, it's gonna be a longer meeting. Sorry about that, I'm gonna have to, yes. Yeah, so we're gonna go to Paul Pagan, Rep Alcos, and then we're gonna hit the people on us, online, real quick, because this is residents and community concerns. I hear the concerns that's being out here, I wanna make sure that everybody is heard and said. And Cory, if you got something else to say, you can come back up again, but I just wanna have this going, okay? Go ahead.
Uh Roland Pagan, not, not to go against anything with the, with the sports and stuff like that, but on a community concern side, on the HPD side, since you guys are all here, what we're asking is if you guys can talk to your parents about parking legally. We're getting a lot of complaints, especially on Coupley Parkway by Geiger Park, with people parking and, and they block the, the bus lane, so the bus can't go into the lane and then it stops the, the traffic and stuff like that. Our officers are trying to find ways to kind of deter people from parking illegally. A few years ago, we actually talked to the park directors and we talked to the guys running the leagues and we told them that if, if it continues, we're gonna talk to the park about not issuing permits to use the park. So we are just asking that you guys talk to your parents about parking legally so that they don't negatively affect the rest of the community as they're trying to get in and out. Thank you.
Rep Alcos, go ahead.
Thank you guys. So some of you guys know about the parks that I've been putting on video and always had concern about our, taking care of parks over the past years. You know, just a little bit before I forget about the parking. Can we just open up some gates so that we can park on the regular streets? We don't have enough parking already by itself, the city fails us for getting enough parking. Our, our community is big, are we gonna tell our kids stay home? Tell our family go play someplace else? In fact, I know some of my family and friends is already playing someplace else, because the parks are bad over here. How can we keep them home? We getting failed by the system. We here because we passionate and this is what we want for our families and our kids. Now, today I went go out to, not today, this whole week, I went out to the maintenance field, talked to the guys who working. Oniula Beach Park. Assume there's about eight station, they only water one station every day. That means you gonna water this one on Monday, you water this one on Tuesday and seven days you don't water the other one on the next day. And they only running five sprinklers when one station takes about ten sprinklers. They cannot get enough material and I've been crying for material for many years and not giving them the material. And what do we do? We let them continue running over us. Second, you talk to the one at Puloa Park, Ocean Point, the twenty acre lot, the one that the kids are playing. The worker said he gotta turn off the water sprinkler by ten thirty in the morning. He cannot water the whole area, he only can water certain areas. Now the station only takes, if we can get one maintenance schedule from the city and tell us what's going on, on the maintenance schedule. Waipahu Soccer Field, nice and green, eight miles down the road, if I just draw a straight line across. Nice and green, I'm sure they get much more water than us. We wanna know why, why is our system broken like this and I can tell you why. Because they got instructions that they cannot water at one certain time. And other than that, they turn off the water. I was there with Senator Favella at Oniula Beach Park when we tried to water ourselves. The, the inspector tell us we cannot water. We cannot help, we cannot do anything else, but enough is enough, but a city. You guys as the board, us as a community, gotta stand up and fight back, as for our kids, for our kids and our families.
Agree. Thank you. Moving on to John Clark. John. John. Kit. John Clark, put it on. Hey, John, you gotta take down the screen. Okay. D. Wiedeman, go ahead.
I, 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 yeah, I'm on the screen. I'm on the phone.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, trying to share the screen here for, for a couple of different reasons. Uh, one, Cory, certainly appreciate your comments. Same thing with the representative. I have a suggestion, and is that we pay attention to the neighborhood board meeting minutes at every meeting. Uh, you know, I've been the co-chair of education or the sole chair since 2015. And we were able to get a lot of things done. Uh, speed bumps, air conditions for most of the schools, many of the schools, upgraded athletic facilities. Um, and that took some time.
Hey, John, John, real quick, Cory, this is, is this your announcement or concern?
No, this is a community concern. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah, this is a community concern. It's gonna take me a minute.
Okay.
How long do we get? A minute, minute and a half?
You got a minute? Go.
Okay. Um, I, I, I'm a little chagrined, and I understand elected officials have their own jobs to do. But this forum is a community forum for solutions, and I expect our elected officials to bring solutions to this forum, not to yell or out speak other people in this forum. So when Cory and when the representative get up here or the senator, I expect them to, to show us what they're doing on our behalf. Not to bring us problems. We know what the problems are. We, we're hearing that. I want to bring up one more thing here. The reason why I'm sharing my screen here is because many of you know that we raised a significant amount of money for the James Campbell High School Band to take their trip to DC for the Fourth of July Parade. Senator Favela has on his flyer $30,000 for James Campbell High School. I don't know what he is implying there, but he had nothing to do with $30,000 for the band. I was intimately involved with that. So I, this, this, this flyer that he sends out to the community says a lot of things, but it doesn't say all the people that work to give millions of dollars for our James Campbell High School, for our air conditioning and other thing. It allows the reader to infer quite a few things. But please don't get it twisted.
Thank you.
Okay? I, I, I got it, Mitch, but I want to say, I, I gave the shout-outs to, to the people that deserved the shout-outs, and Senator Favela was not one of them. Thank you.
D. Wiedeman, go ahead.
All right, thanks, guys. Aloha. I am Dee Wiedeman. I am the owner and event director for Aloha Racing. This is a community announcement that we have a couple of events coming up in the area. Uh, both our Makoa and our Ho'omau, 5Ks, 10Ks, and half marathons are coming. Um, Makoa in November, Ho'omau next March. Um, I'm gonna share my screen so you can kind of see the map. There we go. Uh, the starting area is down here at Waikai. These courses, the 5K and 10K, will go, all three distances actually are gonna go this way and down along the Oniula area here. Half marathoners are gonna keep going up and around into Kapale, but then everybody will come back and finish down at Waikai. All the parking and everything is in this area, uh, kind of containing the congestion. Um, and just so you know, there's no lane closures, no road closures whatsoever. Um, we use, when there are at least two lanes, we're gonna use one of them. When there's not, we're gonna use the bike lane or the shoulder. Uh, but there will be no traffic closures at all. I'd like to leave my contact information in the contacts area, and by all means invite questions or concerns if you have them.
Thank you. Eileen, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Eileen, and thank you for letting me attend virtually. I do have a question here. Uh, but first I want to say thank you again, because I haven't felt safe at these meetings because of the hostility of some of our representatives. Um, anyway, I know what I'm talking about is actually maybe not Ever Beach because it's White Plains Beach. I'm getting feedback, so I'm having a hard time talking. Anyway, uh, a lot of us in Eva have used White Plains Beach for many years. Pardon me? We've used White Plains Beach for a lot of years. Uh, and there's some concerns, and we just don't know who to address those concerns to. So Chairperson, if you could ask the city, state, and the Navy who we uh, address our concerns to, concerned about all the rubbish on the roads uh, um, on the way to White Plains Beach, Tripoli Essex Road, et cetera. And also, there's been a closure of the stand, the, um, sorry, I'm having a hard time with my feedback. There's a stage, a White Plains Beach has been closed down, and people are upset about it, but no one knows who to contact. I contacted Navy POA, and they told me to make an ice comment.
Eileen, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Hello?
Eileen. Okay. We'll try to get back to you.
Chair, uh, I'm able to comment on some of the, on the, the couple of the items that have been mentioned.
Wait, no comments right now. Yeah. But if you have a, well, you have a concern, a residence community concern or announcement?
Uh, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's an announcement about, uh, just clarifying very briefly the purpose of the board. You guys feel like there's a fundamental misunderstanding of what our role is. Our role is to help you bring your voice to our elected officials. We don't have the power to make budgetary decisions at the city level, which it sounds like a lot of these parks issues fall under. That would be Councilmember, um, Toba as well as Tupula. So they, in their positions, they have actual direct power to make budgetary decisions and influence the process of where money goes. So we're with you as community members to hear your concerns and to amplify those voices, but ultimately, we don't have any binding power. So I just want to remind you how it works. The people who you've elected at the city council, city and county council level, they've got that power. Our senators have that power, and our representatives have that power. So I think we've got a little bit backwards here today about what are us. Correct. And we've been, and we can do that along in partnership with you, but we alone can't. We need you guys also to be writing letters to, to your city and county officials, to your state officials. Copy us, we'll back you up, we'll sign the letters, we'll be with you on that, but we need to directly be firing, focusing that, that conversation towards our elected officials in partnership. So just to clarify that. And I'd like to hear from Councilmember Toba on these parks issues, if he has any updates about why the fields seem to be getting less water. Yeah. Less water than other, other areas. Okay. Yeah, okay. Yeah, when it's time for your report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, John Rogers, go ahead.
So hello, everyone. I just want to do a little, um, road safety, bicycle safety, and I just want to remind everyone that there's a law that requires that cars pass bicycles, give them three feet. Um, so if you see a bicycle in the shoulder, kind of give them a little room or slow down. We really appreciate it. Also, there's a helmet law. I've seen a lot of, um, young people riding the, the e-bikes and, and, and regular bikes and no helmets whatsoever. Uh, a person that's less than 16-year-olds, it's Hawaii State Law, that a person that's less than 16-year-old has to have a helmet. And if you're riding a motor scooter, uh, one of those electric bikes that are throttled, um, or, or motorcycle, a person less than 18-year-old has to have a helmet. So I just, uh, want to remind everyone of those safety issues, because I just want, we've been having so many road issues, and I know they're not pedestrian bicycles lately, but, um, uh, they could be. Um, and so it's, I think it's important that we use that first level of safety and that's the protection that we can wear. Also, um, I just want to remind everyone of the Honolulu Century Ride on September 24th. I have, um, handouts back there for Hawaii Bicycling League for all sorts of different things, all, all the things that we do with adult education, because that's one of the things that we can do for you. We can teach you all this stuff, adults, children. We do the fourth graders. We do 4,000 fourth graders every year. Um, and right now, we, we actually need a new Bike Ed truck. So if anyone knows anyone with a, a box truck uh, that they want to give away or sell for really cheap, or if, um, they know people that have money to donate, because we're starting to, um, we're, we're starting a fundraising effort to get a new box truck so that we can continue this effort with the, all the public schools and some of the private schools to teach our fourth graders how to ride a bicycle safely. And then I also want, want to let everyone know that, um, uh, Puloa, um, Malama Puloa Work Day is coming up this next Saturday, um, and, and it's the project at Kapo Pui Park that we are, uh, removing the mangrove and restoring some, um, fish, uh, fish ponds. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alex, you got something?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, to follow up and also just clarify for, from a lot of the comments that we, I'm a community member. I joined this board because of my kids playing on fields and those issues, and so it's kind of following up on what Liam said, and I want you guys to understand what we are. I'm a community member. I have a full-time job. I come in here, I volunteer because I see things and I try to help. We need your help to do these things. We don't have the power. We have people coming up and speak, and I'm not gonna call anyone out, but those are the people that have more power than we do. We have power in the sense that we can pressure, and we can build with you, we can write letters of all the park issues, and we can do those things, but I'm not much different from you. I just got up here in a more formal situation to do this kind of stuff, and so we need to work together. We are part of this community, and we need to do stuff together. It's not like we can go and get things changed. I've been pressuring Thielen and all that for for years, and you don't think I feel the same frustration you do? I think you should understand that Marine Corps with other things, with all these other things, lots of things going on. I feel that. I want that as badly as you do, and we can't get things to move because we're not, we don't have any power to make that stuff happen. All we can do is pressure and send letters and make resolutions and hope that our representatives do stuff and make things happen.
Julie, go ahead.
Um, just make one announcement about Maui fire relief. Since today is Thursday, um, there's a, a collection on Thursday and Friday, so Thursday's already done, but tomorrow, Friday, from 10 to 2 at the Hawaii State Capitol, there's a collection going on for donations to Maui, you know, for fire relief, and let me tell you what things are being collected. They would like toiletries, diapers, formula, and toys, clothing, bedding, household goods, and non-perishable food. What they're not asking for is bottled water, um, at this time due to wait because it still has to be shipped over, so no water at this time. Thank you.
Okay, seeing none of the residents and community concerns or community announcements, we're gonna move on to section five, Hunt, VA Clinic update. One, two, three, four, no, 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 no.
Great, well, good evening, everybody. Tony Gassen with the Hunt Companies, and I want to give you a quick update on how things are going at the VA clinic. Here is an aerial overview just taken a few days ago. They're going along very good. You can see the building is looking like it's reaching finishing stages. They're still working on the parking lot, but look at that nice little meandering walkway. That's a training area on the right side that they're gonna do some PT in with some of the patients. Here is another image. You can see the exterior finishing is coming along very well also. Now, inside, you'll start to see they're putting in a lot of the finishing work. So this is the ceiling area. Here is a interior trellis, see? This, you know what? This clinic's gonna look nice. And, and they're spending some good dollars to get this thing up, and it's wonderful because it is gonna be servicing the veterans. Take a look at this image here. Hey, they're starting to put in the actual plumbing fixtures finally, so everything is still on target for completion in January of next year, and then they'll need the four, the six months to get it open for operation. Overall, the project is still doing good. You can see the landscaping was finally installed, and we, um, did have an inspection with the city and county, so it's going through the 90-day maintenance period. So things are going good on that. Kopeh, hey, you know what? It's still going. Um, State DOE signed off on everything already. We're just waiting on the federal, the US DOE and, um, DLNR, so State DOE is being very helpful. They are, you know, talking to the United States DOE to tell them, hey, it's okay, everything is good, so go ahead and sign it, and we're almost there. We're hoping in, maybe in the next month or two, it gets signed off, and then we can get in there and continue working. And finally, um, you remember they're still working on that traffic signal over at the Waikia-Kapale Parkway intersection. They ironed out some little more engineering details. They're gonna be getting back out there. Still in about two to three months that they're gonna need that much more time to finish up that traffic signal, and then afterwards, it gets turned over to the city and they'll get it energized. That's my quick update for everybody. Are there any questions?
Okay, any question for the board? Any question for the community? I see one. Uncle David, go up to the mic, speak your question, please.
Hello, Tony. First of all, thank you for everything you do. Thank you, board members, again, okay? Question. What will that facility? Will it have doctors, nurses, uh, administrative staff to get VA benefits? Uh, I'm a VA from the early 70s, so I already collecting my benefits. That's what our brothers and sisters out there, they don't know what that's gonna be. Is there a list or do you have a flyer that you're gonna be passing out, or is it on the internet? You know where I go in here, where it's to people.
The facility is gonna provide a lot of services. It's gonna help relieve tripler because tripler's packed.
Yeah. Thank you, Tony.
There's what it is.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yes. See no other questions? Thank you, Tony. Okay, sorry. Senator, go ahead.
I understand all the bells and whistles is great. They deserve it, long overdue. Problem that I have is that how is that gonna help our homeless veterans? And what you guys gonna do for expedite medical relief for mental illness and homelessness that we're having through our streets, that they're being pushed on the side? I have some of them that come to our meetings with me at Locomoco telling how hard it is to get the qualification for Agent Orange. How long Agent Orange was? You gotta prove this to get on list. If you don't make 100% of the list, they stall you. Come back next month. Come back with your pressure is good, whatever. Over and over, they're getting hard time to get their benefits. So how is this gonna help our veterans who fought and gave their life in, in the, in the military for us? Get their benefits quicker? Because I don't hear that. I hear you getting services to relieve tripler, but our people is suffering in Ever Beach. These people that I know I grew up with, can I get their benefits because they're missing one thing on the criteria of Agent Orange? So you know where I'm going with that, okay? And they're not getting their benefits. They're not getting it.
Order. I'll bring a question up with the administration, because we're, we're just building the clinic. I don't know how it's gonna be operated, but I'll bring it up to them. I'll bring it up to them. Yeah.
Good. Seeing no other questions? Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Kit. Debbie's on. Debbie.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I don't have an update on the, um, uh, on our Gentry project this evening, but I did want to address a comment that Senator Favela made. It was never Gentry's idea to put in the teacher housing or workforce housing on the park area that we're dedicating to the USTA and to the DOE. That was a brainchild of a state representative. The bill never made it through the session, and we moved on from there, so that's why we're not building any teacher housing or workforce housing. It was never pursued by the legislature.
All right, no new updates?
Any questions? We, we are planning to dedicate five acres of land to the DOE for expansion of Holomoa School, and we're currently working with them on that.
Okay, we got one question. Cory, go ahead.
Just to clarify then, the land next to Holomoa Elementary.
Yes.
There was may passed by the legislature this session for teacher housing. So will that not include land by the Holomoa Project?
Correct. It does not include that.
Any other questions? Seeing none? You got one? Oh. Cool.
Hello, everyone. Randy Sinaka with the Department of Education Facilities in Operations. So thank you for your time this evening. Just a point of clarification. The money that was allocated for teacher housing dedicated The money that was allocated for teacher housing dedicated to the SFA, School Facility Authority initially came out of the budget at about a hundred seventy-five million. The governor cut it to fifty because he felt that there wasn't enough of a shot clock to get all that project stopped. The fifty million is not specific to a site. It's just teacher housing in general. So the, the work we're doing with Gentry on Holomoa is try to take off Holomoa from a multi-track school. It's the last remaining multi-track school. And that, that school is, is bursting at the seams. So when we can take them off multi-track, that'll give us some relief.
Go ahead.
So Randy, sorry, this is, this is Tanaka.
Hey, Randy.
Just clarifying then, that fifty million dollars that was passed by the governor, okay? Okay, initially, there was land that was designated by Holomoa or potentially a future housing, future housing project. Is that no longer a possibility for the usage of the fifty million dollars?
Well, right now, it's the, the original lot in Debbie, you can correct me, was eleven acres. And uh Gentry allocated five of the eleven for getting uh traffic relief from it being on the street when kids are dropped off at school or picked up at school. So the five acres that Gentry is, is giving to the Department of Education is allocated to that relief, some parking and some, and the school, the additional classroom space that they need. The rest of the acreage, from what we understand from a design standpoint, is dedicated to a tennis facility uh in that area, so six acres. Now, the other thing you need to remember about that property, there's a culvert that cuts through that. So you can't really build a whole lot on that, that division. So um that's the, the proposal that Gentry came to us. It wasn't, in the early days, it was being considered for teacher housing, correct?
Wait, one more question. Julie, go ahead.
Hi, Randy. Um, Julie Ranzola, since you're up, I have a question. You know the fifty million that you were talking about? Is it dedicated strictly for teacher housing or is it for anybody other than teachers to live in it? Because we keep saying teacher housing.
You know, I've got to go back to the legislation. I think there's been discussion about workforce housing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. John Clark, go ahead. It might be for you, Randy. I'm not too sure. I think Gentry. You know, we have a section, I think, in here for DOE. Let me look if we still have it in here.
Actually, that's what my comment is on. I uh.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Okay, any other questions for Gentry?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, John.
Well, actually, my question was for DOE. I just like to uh, I wanted to just thank the gentleman from DOE for uh showing up at the road tonight, at the meeting tonight. I don't know if he's there on behalf of Gentry or what, but it's nice to see the DOE person there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other questions? Thank you, Debbie. Okay, moving on to a sicko. If she's not, if Lisa's not on. Okay, she's at a funeral, that's why. I know she wrote a text. Sorry, let me look, let me look, let me look. She said, update during uh, she says, sorry, she's unable to make it to next meeting. She had a funeral. Uh, the HHL did uh confirm that they will be offering lots based on date of application on area island list. We have more other updates available at the next board meeting or will have more updates on a next board meeting. Uh, that, now that is for the Hawaiian homes out in Ever. Uh, okay, moving on to DR Horton, who opili? Anyone? Yes. Okay, go ahead. If you have any questions, you can take that to Lisa.
Just, just want to get clarification for the board understands um the complexity of that lot. They have a road that is in the back of the city and county that adjacent to that lot that had Haz a sequel when the first was going to bill it. To please, if you're going to build a subdivision because the Renton Road is over congested and they don't want any more cars on that road, if they could consider, we have the, we have the Department of Transportation from the city come out. Possibility. But because Hawaiian Homes, ladies and gentlemen, have an exemption from sidewalks, roads and congestion. So I told the director on our tour at Kalapapa that absolutely not Hawaiian Homes is not billing. Any houses, I'm going to give a rip what, I'm going to carry exemptions into the build a road to give relief for traffic on Renton Road. And that's the conversation I had, and I told Lisa this six hundred million times. They gave it to um Hawaiian Homes to bill it, so they are be exempt from those sidewalks and those provisions. And that's not fair to this community. Thank you.
Got it. Okay, anyone from DR Horton? Don't see any. Okay, we'll move on to government officials. Marine Corps Base Hawaii, duty officer?
Chair, members, community, good evening. Major Jordan Fox from Marine Corps Base Hawaii. Uh, so I'll continue on talking about the RTF. Uh, we're continuing to make progress on Monday, August seventh. Myself, along with members of the MCBH staff, members of the University of Hawaii Applied Research Lab, the Marine Innovation Unit and the Range Compatibility Use Zone Team, uh walked the grounds of PRTF. We in our assessment, so we are making progress in this process uh to, to either make a compatible range uh and to assuage some of your concerns. For lead testing, uh Colonel Bevan sent the letter to uh the chair and the vice chair that we sent uh to the DOH on uh early May. We have received a response from here, uh and they provided a shortlist of requirements for the Marine Corps to meet prior to conducting the joint sampling. One of those requirements is the completion of Haz WAPR training, which is hazardous materials and waste uh trainings. It's forty hours long. That's one of the requirements. I'm not sure of the other ones. Uh, I'll have to speak to Colonel Bevan when he returns from his trip. Uh, he went to see his father in New Mexico. Anything, any questions? Uh, that's what I've got tonight.
Chair, question? Okay, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, just, can you give us some more specific update on what those mitigation um efforts look like? You said you walked the grounds with uh these different folks, Applied Research Lab. What are we talking about here? Are we talking about the sound barriers? Can you clarify what, what you mean by that? And then there's a second part to the question, but I'll let you answer that first.
Yeah, uh, so the Applied Research Lab focused mainly on noise, uh noise mitigation. So that could be, that could be a sound wall, that could be other things. Um, they're continuing the studies. This was the, the kickoff, right? So they came out, this is the first time they've walked uh the facility. Uh, so they got an idea of what, what we're working with. Um, so they'll take that, they'll be back for more iterations, continue to study the, the, the problem, and then at some point, you know, propose solutions to, to the Marine Corps.
Okay, so it's just limited to sound mitigation at the moment?
Oh, yeah, sorry. The Range Compatibility Use Zone Team, they're, they're focused on noise, safety and um other things, not, not lead specifically.
Okay, uh regarding the second part of your uh update on the lead, thank you. Um, I took a look at the Department of Health documents that, that they sent you, their feedback to the Marine Corps' proposed lead testing uh scheme. That's, could happen any day now. Uh, Department of Health, actually, I, I wouldn't describe it as a shortlist. They had four pages of very specific comments and recommendations for the Marine Corps and how they do that testing. And uh, so I'm curious whether you're, is the Marine Corps obligated to adhere to what the DOH has put forward there? Or is that just a suggestion and in the end of the day, the Marine Corps can take it or leave it and just move forward?
At the end of the day, we're going to meet the requirements from the Department of Health. That way, we can work together, get this joint sampling and analysis complete, and then share the results with the community.
You have a projected date?
Okay.
I do not.
Any other questions? Alex, go ahead.
Hey, thanks for that, for the update. Appreciate it. Um, if you could, so when I know the DOH uh recommendations and solicitations from you for, for more specifics, can you share those responses with us as well as a board so we're aware of that? Or I would ask you, if you're able to do that, that you do that, so the work, a part of that, and we're, we're, we're seeing what's actually being taken into consideration with the sampling.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions from the board? Any question for the community? Okay, Senator, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. So you, you mean to tell me that you guys are not looking to relocate at firing range? You're going to spend money to muffle, to Band-Aid, to make pretend you guys care, when you don't care about my community? We already told you, would you guys be able to build this now with the community as it is now? No. But you got to change with times. Times have changed and you guys need to go. You guys going to do all these mediation, spend all the federal dollars. You guys should relocate at Canary Marine Base like everybody else said. And pow, you don't need to worry about no lead, no need, nothing else. Because that's again, you guys peel out the land and then anyway, you guys leave them, you guys got to kind. So please relocate.
Thanks, Senator.
Go ahead.
Lojataro Rojas, I'd like to reiterate that as well. I was going to ask for more specifications, you know? You're gonna, you walk through and then you're going to go ahead and study? And then how much more time for a sound wall? I can hear from all the way over here. You know, and again, it, it's, it's traumatizing just to hear that, you know? Like I said, knowing what you've done to the land, knowing there's lead contamination, and now it sounds exactly like that. You're going a different route. Now let's study, let's take more time, let's go back. I was going to ask you, how long do you have in your mind to do these studies and to actually get something done, especially relocating? How many more years?
Relocating the range is going to take, take some time.
Why?
Because the Marine Corps Base Hawaii cannot make that decision. Uh, like I mentioned last meeting, that needs to be made at the federal level uh with Congress uh in DC.
So can you put a deadline to these actions?
I cannot.
What's the purpose of it?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. Go ahead, John.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, first of all, I'd like to uh thank the US Marine Corps rep for appearing at our board meeting tonight. I would like to uh refer back to a statement I made earlier regarding the Education Committee and what we were able to do as a community. Over the course of probably three, four, maybe five years, we worked together with the Department of Education and our legislatures at the time, Senator Favela was not one of them, to come up with money to fund air conditioning for the schools in Ever Beach, including Campbell, including Ever Beach Elementary School, including Alima and a couple of others. It did take time, but we were successful at it. I can't comment on whether or not we're going to be successful getting the Marine Corps base to move. But one of the successful strategies that we use, that I used, was every time one of our elected officials came up to the meeting, to the mic, to state their political case or whatever, I challenged them to do something different. Bob McDermott wound up bringing suit against DOE. We did, we did a lot of different things. But what I did was that the following month, I read those meeting minutes to the legislatures, to the people in the meeting, and I reminded them of what they said they were going to do at the last meeting. It took several years for that to happen, but we got that done. That's all I'm saying, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, can I provide one more quick update that uh I think is important for people here? It's an update that's relevant to what was.
Go ahead.
Um, just a quick update to everybody is that uh we've met with Representative Ed Case, uh a coalition of uh folks from the neighborhood, Alexander and I, as neighborhood board members. And Representative Case has uh, uh, he has um put forth his own, his own idea of how to move on the range. He, he wants to first move forward with this further lead testing just to verify um or, or not what the Surf Rider Foundation results were. There seems to be some disagreement about whether those results are, are accurate. Um, so that seems to be step one, but I just want folks to know that we need our elected leaders to join us in engaging with the federal officials on this issue. Uh, because uh I think Jordan has been in good faith sharing where he can with us and we really appreciate it. But as uh, as Alex said, we need to be in the loop in all of this. So when this testing goes forward, for example, uh, our understanding is the Marines will be doing the testing and DOH will not be on site for that testing. So we just want to be clear that we are working with Representative Case. That is uh the next step. However, however, we also feel that that should not be the, the sole um measurement for what happens with the range.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just uh recently held a fishing tournament, a children's fishing tournament at Ever Beach Park. Uh, I had eighty-nine entries. And little did they know, I let all the kids know, it's a catch and release tournament. Do you know why? It's because lead in the water. I didn't let no kids take the fish off. I had eighty-nine entries, about forty-something fish came out of there. It was a catch and release because it was not good to eat.
Thank you. Yeah, all ones. It's all one minute. Any other questions? Seeing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. US Navy, Mike Andrews?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Members of the Community. I want to start with a statement that was released today by US Indo-Pacific Command. Uh, Indo-Pacific Command assets are providing firefighting support to Maui and Hawaii Islands. Active-duty military components under Indo-Pacific Command are providing support to firefighting efforts on Maui and Hawaii Islands. The US Army's Twenty-Fifth Combat Infantry Brigade has deployed two UH-60 Blackhawks and one CH-47 Chinook helicopters to uh Hawaii Island to conduct firefighting operations. And additionally, US Navy uh Helicopter Maritime Strike Squadron Thirty-Seven has sent Seahawk helicopters to assist the US Coast Guard in search and rescue operations. The US Indo-Pacific Command stands ready to assist as requested by the state of Hawaii and the Hawaii National Guard. We offer our deepest condolences to the families and communities that have been devastated by these destructive fire wildfires. Our hearts and thoughts uh go with the, or with the people of Hawaii and the first responders as they fight these wildfires. I'd like to address a, an item that you may have seen in the news Tuesday concerning what appeared initially to have been the possibility of elevated uh TPH, total petroleum hydrocarbons in water samples that were taken in Navy housing. Uh, this past Monday, Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam learned that a verbal notification was received on the seventh of August of two preliminary results of total petro, uh petroleum hydrocarbon in the oil or TPHO range uh from a single residence in the Doris Miller and another residence in the Radford Terrace housing areas near Joint Base. These uh test results were proven to have been the result of a laboratory error. We reemphasize that there has been no jet fuel found in these samples. Uh, we learned of these exceedance, exceedances from the lab that was actually conducting the testing. Uh, there were levels uh that they reacted to were ones that were established by the Hawaii Department of Health as part of the uh drinking water uh long-term monitoring program. Uh, Navy personnel immediately collected additional water samples from these impacted homes and their neighbors uh as well as a nearby uh childcare center uh to test them using an on-lab site analyzer, which is a, I hate to use the comparison, but it's almost like an early pregnancy test. It either is TPH or is not TPH. In these cases, there were no indications of TPH. And then uh re-samples were taken of the uh, redraws were taken of the samples to the same laboratory who evaluated and again reaffirmed the, the fact that there are no uh, no presence of jet fuel in these samples. Okay, um, the Navy's Drinking Water Long-Term Monitoring Program, okay, which is something that I referred to earlier, uh has been one of our most important resources in getting the word out on uh the presence of fuel in, for the lot, the fact that there isn't fuel in these uh, in the drinking water system, that the drinking water system is safe. Uh, they have a booth that has been set up uh at Halsey Terrace, many, Navy Mini Exchange uh on August the ninth uh to answer questions from the community about this current situation. And also as a point of, of note for the local community, uh they made a presentation to the faculty and staff of the Iroquois Elementary School uh on uh the thirty-first of, uh, no, let me check that date, the third of August. And they will be also having the information booth at the school's open house on the twenty-fifth of August. Want to bring up a couple of things that are not related to Navy water, uh the.
Mike, real quick, August third?
August third was when the.
When it happened, okay.
I'm sorry. Um, the Navy uh is hiring some positions. We have a job fair that's coming. Uh, we'll be participating in a job fair at the Blaisdell Center on the twenty-third of this month. Uh, the Navy will be able to offer initial job offers to positions such as dispatchers, uh security guards, people in financial management and other areas, so make that as an opportunity. And last item, like uh to let you know that another ship has joined the Navy at Pearl Harbor. USS Carl Levin arrived at Pearl Harbor on the eighth of August. This is the Navy's newest guided missile destroyer, was commissioned in Bath Ironworks, Maine, and uh commit, was. commit, was long built in Bath Ironworks, Maine and was commissioned by the Navy in Baltimore this past June. Sub to your questions, sir. There's more details in the written report that I submitted to the chairman earlier today.
Send that out to the board members. Any questions from the board? Okay, go ahead Cory.
Just one question. Are you also testing the water currently for PFAs as well?
Not, it's not part of the long-term monitoring program, but that is part of the Navy's overall water quality program. It's not, it's the, it's not with the frequency of what we're doing and the, the large scope of it. But yes, there are tests and I would like to direct people to the annual water quality report that has been posted by the Navy. You can find it on the Navy Region Hawaii's website.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the community? Okay, we got one, two. We got two? Go ahead.
Aloha Tara Rojas. I have a question for the Navy. Are you aware that I was speaking with somebody who was chem, is a chem, or was a chemical engineer? And studied at MIT and they worked with a water purification system. And they said that there exists the technology to clean the water. And technically, the Navy, the DOD can clean the water in the aquifer in a matter of, within a week. Do you know why you're just choosing not to and to keep the community sick? And especially these islands in the middle of the Pacific?
Mr. Chairman, our response from the Navy has been to work closely with our regulatory partners, the Environmental Protection Agency and the Hawaii Department of Health. The means of remediation has been proposed to and agreed upon by those agencies. It's been deemed to be the most dependable, where it's reliable in these particular instances. And this is something that, you know, we work with our partners and we are doing what we're asked to do.
All right. Thank you. And please, anybody coming up to know, Mike, please address the chair.
Chair, leave it up here. Aloha.
All right.
Okay. Question, two questions for the Navy. First question is, you drink the water up in Red Hill? No, you personally?
The water from Red Hill.
Thank you.
No, excuse me, sir. Allow me to finish.
Okay, go ahead.
The water from Red Hill Shaft.
Gonna, gonna address me?
Yeah. The water, Mr. Chairman, the water from the Red Hill Shaft.
Hold on, Mike. It's his time.
Okay. He asked a question. I tried to answer it. I was not given the opportunity to answer it. The water from the, the Navy's Red Hill Shaft, which was what was contaminated during the crisis of more than eighteen months ago, almost two years now, has been secured since that time. All the Navy's water is currently being drawn from the, the Waiba Shaft, which is six miles away from the housing at Joint Base. So yes, sir, I do drink the water in the Navy's drinking water system.
Thank you, sir. It was a yes and no.
You didn't give me that opportunity, sir.
Second question, Uncle?
The second one is, uh, can you update us on, or update me? On the project on Pearl Harbor coming up? We're getting a couple billion dollars in, uh, building a new facility on the base?
Mr. Chairman, I know, have some knowledge of the, the shipyard optimization program, which is part of a Navy-wide program to update the critical infrastructures, not just the Pearl Harbor Naval Shipyard, but all four of the Navy's shipyards. I don't have specifics, but I do know that it principally involves the improvements to a dry dock that is currently being used, but is going to very soon be obsolete with the decommissioning of Los Angeles class submarines.
Thank you Chair. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Senator, go ahead.
Yeah Chair, can you find out? When is the process and how long they're gonna take before they can start cleaning up Pearl Harbor? Cause Pearl Harbor is poisoning Ever Beach. The currents are bringing the contamination to Iroquois Point and Puloa Beach Park. People are getting itchy and rash. And when we asked the city and the state, it's because of the slow seepage of the ships that is down there is getting worse and it's releasing the oil and contaminations towards our, towards our ocean. So that's the first question. Second question Chair, try asking him how much more water do we have at the Waiba Stream? Which Randy Lau, Bernie Lau already told us that we are depleting our aquifer. So it's great that we get them six miles away, but who water are we taking from six miles away? But those are the two questions.
Take it Chair.
The first Chair, Mr. Chairman, the answer to the first question is best as I can answer it. I think the Senator is making reference to the Arizona Memorial, which is part of the National Park Service. It's not the Navy's anymore. If there is any work to be done or as it is described through other agencies, yes, it will be done. But I am not aware of any immediate plans. As for the Navy, that, the water that supplies the Navy's drinking water system, it's my understanding that the Navy's Waiba Shaft, its own well is what is providing it. It's not to the decline or the detriment of other wells that may be related to the aquifer. But we are working very closely with our partners to make sure that we're doing things in a responsible manner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See no other questions? I know this is gonna be your last meeting.
I got one more.
You got one more?
One more.
Lucky guy.
I want to give the Senator time to load up.
All right. It sounds good. All right. Thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving on to US Army.
All right. Good evening Chair, Board and Community Members. Major Bonglo, tonight's duty officer for the United States Army. We've got a couple of announcements for you guys. First, US Army Garrison Hawaii is holding its next hiring fair on August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three at KE Lagoon Memorial Hall, beginning at zero eight-thirty and ending at two PM. Second, the Nakoa Wounded Warrior Canoe Regatta will take place on August nineteenth at Fort DeRusi Beach Park at seven forty AM and it'll last till four PM. Third, in addition to the Navy, the US Army Garrison Hawaii will be at the Hawaii Career Expo at Neo Blaisdell Center Exhibition Hall on Wednesday, August twenty-third. The career expo will be from nine o'clock till two PM. Next, in June, the Army conducted a homeless and trash sweep of the Mokalea area. The Army partnered with HPD and the Department of Transportation to help clean up the beach to include displacing the homeless camp on the beach who were not legally permitted to be there. The sweep was considered successful by all parties involved and represents the future actions that will take place in or at other Army areas with the homeless population. In the coming days, there will be another sweep of the same area to help clean up the beach and to take care of the few homeless that have returned since the last sweep. Lastly, the US Army Garrison published the August Training Advisory for the month of August. And I printed a couple of copies in the back of the table. Any question, pending your questions.
Any question from the board? Any question from the community? Okay, Senator?
Yeah Chair, the question is, I understand that they're relocating the homeless and they're gonna back to relocate the homeless. But aren't they having a job fair? Can't they ask those guys, maybe they need a job? Maybe they won't come back. Thank you Chair.
We'll take that back. Thanks Senator. Go ahead.
Aloha Tara Rojas. Just one quick observation. And I just wanted to know if you would think about the irony of the statement you just made about how you removed the homeless people because they were not legally allowed to be there. So just sit and reflect on that, the irony of it.
Thank you ma'am. Okay, see no other questions? Thank you. Okay, moving on to Representative Ed Case, Nestor. Yon?
Yes, sir Chairman. Can you hear me, members of the board?
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. I have the Congressman's third quarter neighborhood board report in the chat. There's a link to that for those that can access it electronically. Chairman, I can go over quickly the third quarter report for those that are not able to access that link. Basically, what he is saying here in his report is that he's continuing his work on the House Appropriations Committee. As you know, there are a number of measures that need to be approved in the House first before they go over to the Senate for their review. We're trying to do this to fund the government and all its various programs and services for the next fiscal year that begins on October first, fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. Tell you the truth, it's been slow going and we're trying to make sure that we avert a shutdown of the federal government. Chairman, he also talks about a meeting with various federal officials recently. The head of the Department of Housing and Urban Development was here in Honolulu to meet not just with the members of Congress, but also members of the city and developers and trying to come up with affordable housing solutions. Let's see, he also talks about his next Congressional App Challenge, calling on entrance. If you go to his website or to this report that, Mr. Chairman, I think I sent a copy to you electronically about a week or so ago. And you'll find the process by which students in middle and high schools can, once again, sign up to compete in the app challenge, which happens every year. And finally, he's also accepting applications to the various service academies. We do have a staffer here in the district that will review the applications and together will sit with the Congressman to go over those that might be considered to be congressional appointees to the various military academies. Yeah. Most, unfortunately, we have been working behind the scenes, working with the rest of the members of the Hawaii Congressional delegation to see what aid we can get, you know, the good people of Maui being affected by the disaster there recently. As you know, the President did approve the Declaration of Assistance to the people of Maui this morning. And we're trying to make sure that we are sure all the federal resources that will be necessary to get our O'hana and Lahaina back on their feet. We're not also, we're not gonna forget the people on the Big Island just in case they're needed. They need assistance as well dealing with the various fires on that island as well. But apparently not as serious as what the people of Lahaina have faced recently. With that, Mr. Chairman, welcome. Any questions from you and members of the board and the community?
He's still at five seconds. Okay.
Just wanted to thank Representative Case for his support of the community in relocating Puloa Range. He's been very gracious in meeting with us and voicing his concern about the impact of the range on the health and safety of the community. And again, just a shout out and thank you to Representative Ed Case on behalf of the board.
And I thank the members of the community that actually did come to our district office to meet with the Congressman. So that was good to have that, that dialogue.
And members of the community that are interested can follow at relocatepuloarange on Instagram, relocatepuloarange.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Any other questions for the community? Okay, we got one? Wait Senator?
Thank, thank you Chair. Just a, just a quick one. Besides Ed Case, Chair, can, can you find out if the rest of our delegates is gonna get on board? Because the more of our delegates get on board, then we can move things faster in relocating Puloa Gun Range because of the safety concerns that we have as a community.
Senator, is that, is that something that you're able to help us with? Cause that.
Any other questions from the community? Oh, you have an answer to that question? Nestor?
Now, Mr. Chairman, I'll make sure that the members of the rest of the Hawaii Congressional delegation are aware of the dialogue that we had with the community. And any follow-ups, I will continue to update the board, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other questions. Thank you Nestor for that report.
Thank you Chairman.
Okay, moving on to Mayor's rep. Keal? Hi Keal.
Hello, aloha, ahi ahi kako. Keal Poo, Representative of Mayor Blangiardi, Deputy Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation. I'm gonna start with some highlights, Mayor's highlights, and we have flyers in the back if you folks want to pick it up. Just yesterday, our, we have a new Director of the Department of Facilities and Maintenance, Gene Albano. He was confirmed yesterday by the City Council. He will, um, his work experience includes Kakaako infrastructure redevelopment, HFD's South Street Headquarters and our Halava, our DFM Halava Base Yard. So we have a new director. And also the mayor has designated Dida Holyfield as Chief Director Designate for the Department of Enterprise Services. She has spent the past nine years as General Manager of the local radios, local radio stations owned and operated by CLM Media Group. In addition to her duties as a radio DJ on country ninety-seven point five, and since nineteen ninety-seven has managed her own successful live events. So Enterprise Services takes care of the Blaisdell, the zoo and all of our concession type concessions. Affordable housing, so on July seventeen, Governor Josh Green signed an emergency proclamation to combat the escalating affordable, affordable housing crisis here in Hawaii. Now, a collaborative effort by the state and all four counties will seek to streamline the processes for the development of fifty thousand housing units over the next five years. And since we're talking about the counties, we too want to acknowledge what's happened in Maui and all of our aloha is with the O'hana there. Keeping our neighborhoods safely housed, as housing costs increase, some of our neighbors continue to struggle more than ever to pay their rent and utility bills. So this past summer, the city and county held multiple events across different locations here on Oahu to support families with rental and utility relief. Over six hundred families applied for short-term rent and utility help at these events. And the program has helped more than eighteen thousand Oahu families so far. Board of Water, so every five years, BWS reviews its current rate schedule and structure as part of a cost service study. BWS, BWS's operations are funded by rate pairs. These rent rates fund capital improvement projects, pipe and pump replacement and repair, facilities maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. BWS is not funded through property taxes like the rest of the city departments. So as part of this rate setting process, Board of Water would like to present to each of the boards their proposed five-year increases. They are looking to do a twenty to thirty-minute presentation that, and that doesn't include Q and A. So I believe they will be reaching out to see if they can schedule something with this board. Okay, so I'm gonna address issues, concerns from last month's meeting in Mahalo for reading my report, Chair. I was not here. So first was President Karen Luke raised concerns regarding the merits of the mayor's twelve percent pay raise when homelessness, homelessness is up among the elderly and crimes are up. The mayor did not request this raise. The salary commission chose the twelve percent raise. This is the first raise that the office or any of the mayor's cabinet has received in three years. And then there was a question raised by Tara last month for an update from Board of Water on the Honolili watershed. So we hope to bring that update either next month or I'm not sure if Board of Water, I don't see him here, but he might have an update. If not, we'll come back next month. And then I, I did, I do have my colleague here, Roger Babcock. So he'll address the E and V concerns that were raised last month. There were three. But real quick, before I get to that, just wanna acknowledge, I was online listening before I got here in person, all of the concerns that were raised about our parks. There are such things that are unique to each of the parks. Some of our parks are irrigated by R1 or recycled water. So when things break down, we don't get water. That being said though, when they're not broken, they should be working. What we, so I, anyway, I just want to acknowledge all the issues and concerns that were raised and I look forward to hearing from the Parks Board. And I will follow up on all of those concerns for sure. Do we want E and V to, is that okay for him to share?
I can extend on for the questions that, but prior to that, not, not only give the, the answers to the questions of what the community went ask, we want, you know, ramifications. Because I understand R1, R2 and all that kind of water. You can tell by the medians from the state and stuff when no more, everything die. But we get water trucks, the city get water trucks, the city get the means and all that. And we're talking about people that's specifically gonna be there to mine the parks. They're gonna see, oh, grass dying, we need water. Not the community coming out and notifying us to let you guys. They're going to see, oh, grass dying, we need water, not the community coming out and notifying us to let you guys know. So not only we need the water, we need the people, the force that they get every place else to come here. And I don't think that's a hard ask, because how long, how bush never have one, you know, and one bathroom plus just one dedicated guy there. We always have roving crew, roving crew, roving crew. So the roving crew only come when they come to pick up the trash and leave. So we need the guys there to let the, let you guys know that these things need to be done, trash there, car there, you know? That's the, that's the main concern that we have. You know, the community is coming out already worried about their kids. Next thing we hear is, oh, my, my, my son and boss's knee who we sue. You know, then now they lose the park and the city can get sued. So prior to all of this, now, I mean, I've never seen so many parents come out here with a concern just for play parks. They were all coming out prior, hey, we need the parks, please, we need this. Now it's, hey, the parks that we playing at is overused. That's all, real quick. Thank you.
Thanks, Kehau. I could see you. So maybe if we do this next Parks meeting, if you're able to attend, that would, and we can maybe just start going through some of those as well and kind of realigning and talk about those decisions so that when we come back, so we can take the time and not use the time of this board meeting, really go into detail, and then we can give some kind of summary report.
I think that'd be great. And David had some good ideas too, and they're complex issues and they're, they're, they're complex issues to each unique, to each part. So I think it would be good to sit down and have some conversation. And I'll be, Augie can talk about his career fair that's coming up soon here in Eva.
Okay, Director Babcock, you're next. Oh, wait, real quick, after their report, then you can come up. Go ahead, Director.
Thanks. So good evening, Chair and board members, Roger Babcock, Director of Department of Environmental Services. We take care of wastewater and refuse. So, so I'm here, there was a, there was a, one of the questions from, I guess, last month was see if I would come and be here to answer questions. And so I'm here. There was a couple of specific comments from last time that I can answer first and then happy to answer, go into anything else that you guys want to go into. So there was, one of the questions was, Resident Luke requested an update on the proposed sewage system project in Eva District. And if Honouliuli still is taking wastewater from Pearl City and receiving truckloads of sludge from Sand Island because the system is unable to do secondary treatment and it will cost $1.5 billion to fix. So I have an answer for, you know, that specific thing. So Eva, the Eva District is, we are proceeding, E and V is proceeding towards construction of Eva Beach Sewer System improvements. And this is for the, called Section Four, which will connect about approximately 1,000 homes that currently have cesspools which have been banned by the state. And they will connect to Honouliuli Wastewater Treatment Plant and through, through a new set of gravity sewers that go to the existing Eva Beach Pump Station and will pump up to Honouliuli. Construction of that project is currently scheduled to begin in 2025 and be completed in '27. The Honouliuli, there was a question about Pearl City. Honouliuli Service District does include Pearl City. Honouliuli Treatment Plant does not receive sludge from the Sand Island Wastewater Treatment Plant. The Sand Island Treatment Plant has its own sludge treatment system which produces Class A recyclable biosolids, a product that's used as a fertilizer in various places on the island. And so they only have, they only take care of their own sludge. They don't take sludge from anywhere else or send sludge to anywhere to another treatment plant. And with respect to the upgrades, Sand Island Treatment Plant is currently being upgraded. We have to do that because of a consent decree with the federal government and the EPA and the State Department of Health. And for phase one of that upgrade is, there's two phases. Phase one upgrade is currently under, under construction. It's about 20% complete. That will be completed in 2026 and phase two is currently in design. Phase two will complete the requirements for the consent decree and that's due to be completed in 2035. So that's a long, a long-term project. The other, and you know, I'd be happy to come another time if you'd like to make a full presentation. I like PowerPoint on the Eva District Sewer System, if you want, I could show you what that's going to look like. But it's a several year process before that can begin, that has to go through city council several times for it to get approved. With respect to, there was another question from, it's overcharged from Resident Karen Luke requested credit for two years. She was overcharged for sewer charges for the son's home. And so the additional, we'd be happy to look into that, but we need additional information. The, if we, we could get the BWS account number and/or the service address, then we could, I could investigate that and, and get an, a specific answer. And or she could call the, our customer service number, which is 786-3330 for assistance or get, you know, get the information and I can, I can relay that and get a specific answer. So anyway, if there's any questions about that, that's fine, or happy to answer any other questions you have about anything to do with wastewater or solid waste.
Yeah, we can set up for October or November for that presentation.
Yep.
Okay, we have two questions and one on the board.
Not for E and V, I have for the mayor.
Mayor, okay, you have one for him or?
One for each.
Okay, go for him and then you got to stand back in line for, go ahead.
Okay, and so my first question would be, oh, so now my first question would be if, yes, if you can come back to do a presentation, a full presentation. Because what was really concerning was back with, in the break in Makule Road and then one week later, the water main break in February, that it lasted for, they didn't know how long, ended up lasting for one week. You know, 24 seven, five subcontracting, you know, subcontracted companies. And I remember on the report saying, hearing them say that if they didn't do that, the whole of Honouliu Eva Beach would have been affected. Yeah, so it would have came up everywhere. So I just wanted to know that and I guess the specifics of this upgrade and how it relates to actually the piping, because when you're speaking, you know, the people working on the pipes there, they said because of the old infrastructure of the pipes themselves, that any movement, it'll break and it'll just keep going down the line. So yes, full presentation we could.
Yeah, I guess he can answer all those questions on the presentation. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Senator, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not sure that you recognize me. I was at the neighborhood board, I mean, excuse me, commission meeting yesterday. And Councilman Augie Toba and Councilman Tupola had asked the committee to put it back into committee because there was not enough information for the community. This $50 million thing that they want to do, there's no proof. Clean Water Act says there is no danger to our drinking water. But yes, the state did them in 2017. I wasn't there. So we're going to create a bill to repeal a closure of certain cesspools that is so far from the ocean that is not bothering anybody for decades. So Chair, my question is, who's going to pay for the hookup when they spend $50 million to bring the lines out in front of my auntie's house? Who's going to put it in? My auntie. We don't have that kind of money, guys. We're going to get sued, sued and sued because why? They're 83 years old. They don't have that kind of money. And you know what they're going to do, guys? Same thing that they did to us in Lira Estates. If we don't hook up in a timely manner, Chair, they're going to fine us per day. That's wrong.
Okay, thank you. You have, you have an answer?
Uh, yeah, sure. Well, a couple of things. The, going back to the, about the forced main break, so there was forced main break, I think you folks know, that was in February. It was, it occurred on February 3rd and it was repaired on February 8th. It was a challenging repair for the contractor because it was, the pipe is about 10 feet deep and it's a, it's a large pipe, 30 inch pipe and in, it's in groundwater. So once they expose the pipe, it, the hole fills up with water. So they, they can't repair, they couldn't do the welding and stuff while it was underwater. So they had to de-water and that took, that took quite a bit of time. Once they got it, once they got it dry, they repaired it really quickly and put it back in service on the 8th. But to address that, it is, it is a single force main, it's the only one that goes from the pump station. So we're in the process of putting in a second line, a second force main line, which is on a different alignment. That has been, that has been preliminary designed. So that's a second force main from the Eva Beach Pump Station up to Honouliuli. It goes to the same location, but it follows a different route. And that project is, has been designed, there's been design funds in FY '22, FY '23, and there's more in FY '25. Construction tentatively now is scheduled for that to begin in '26 and go through '28. It's a fairly long distance. It's about 10,000 feet, over two miles, approximately two miles. And there's currently $30 million budgeted for that. So at that point, that, that would be, that would be replaced.
You know, in your presentation that you, you're going to come down back for? Can you show that line? Because now if we're doing any roadwork or anything like that, you're going to dig up the road again come 24, 25, 26?
25, 26, yeah, or 26 through 28, yeah. So we, we'd coordinate with other, you know, with the other departments and, and the state to make sure we, you know, get the road, get the roads not repaid right before that.
But those, those answers, you can come back on the presentation. I just was going, if you had an answer for the Senator on the $50 million.
Yeah, so that, the, my full presentation would, would address that and how that works. But yeah, when, when the sewer, when the city puts in sewers and sewers are brought to your, to your home, to your street, then according to ordinance, you do need to connect. And there, and, and currently that is at the, at the expense of the homeowner to do the connection.
Already. So we'll set you up for October.
Sounds good.
Already.
Just to let you know, so when they did that to us in Lira Estates, who was in charge of filling up the cesspool and tying it in? Now, the new law, you cannot do it. You have to hire a contractor and a licensed plumber. So you cannot fill up your own cesspool. You have to hire somebody. Mind you know, we bought the materials just for the dirt for the cesspool back then was $3,000. So imagine what it costs now. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Director. Can you have one more question for? Oh, this was your?
I'm Karen Luke. I'm very happy to see Dr. Babcock here. And concerning the costs of this construction for the sewer system, I, I'm wondering why this was not proposed years ago when the homes were built? Because today's costs are outlandish. Maybe they could have afforded them a lot better 20 years ago. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I don't really have an answer for that. I'm not sure what, you know, what was done in the past and why, why sewers weren't put in at that time. I think that, that development was from the 70s and 80s. And at that time, I guess, you know, it was approved by, by planning, planning department for, DPP for, for use of cesspools instead of.
And I guess you guys can talk offline about our bill and stuff like that, the more information that you need.
Yeah, happy to.
I guess we got, Kehau got one question for, for Kehau. Thank you, Director.
Thanks, thanks, Chair. Thanks, Kehau. Yes, this is about, this is about, I got approached by the Westlock community. So this is about Westlock R1 water, which isn't really R1 water, it's pond water from the golf course. So the, the same Kapa Pui to the two Westlocks, so Westlock elderly, we all get the same water from a pond in the golf course. Well, the Westlock was approached, I don't, Westlock Fairways, I'm talking specifically, was approached by the golf course and said, hey, you guys got to limit your water use because we're over budget. Now, this was before, this was months ago and I'm just finding this out because our, our whole place was, you know, turning brown when I asked the question. And so they were told that they had to limit their water use to certain days. I don't know all the specifics because they were over budget. That's what they were told. And so they, they followed that, those and we're just trying, now it's July, so we're in a new budget. So I'm hoping that someone can talk to the golf course and say, hey, you guys in budget, let's let them water again at a normal rate. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, we will take that back.
Yeah, it's not Parks, it's.
Go ahead.
Okay, aloha, Tara, rokas. And I just wanted to ask, well, question and comment regarding the emergency housing proclamation. One kind of a comment to the community that we should really be concerned when this type of proclamation is made. Because if you take a look at Sierra Club, they can explain it really well on the issues we have with this emergency proclamation. Now, when you look at, you know, all our hearts and our love and our pule for our Maui Ohana, but you can see what a real emergency is and how it affects the whole state and a lot of people. These emergency housing proclamation really is not doing that and we know.
Issue from the governor, these folks are from the city.
Right, I know it's brought up about, you know, the housing proclamation. So I just was going to mention.
That's the governor's office. These folks are from the city. Please just keep it to the right official.
Right, right, right. So just mentioning that about the housing proclamation, yeah? Real emergencies, mahalo.
Senator, go ahead.
As board members, you can say point of order and the chair going to ask you, what is your point of order? And then you tell him, are you telling her that things is great? What is the chair's purview and the chair's job? Just to let you know, because all night you've been doing certain things and, you know, I've been letting it go. But you gotta, you guys gotta be, watch your guys tone when you guys talking to our community. Okay, because yes, you guys are an advisory board, but when they come before you guys, the city and gentry, you guys put a green light on it. Okay, so my concern is tired of hearing excuses. What's your point of order, crybaby?
Go ahead, go ahead, John.
Senator, again, this is not your form. Point of order, Senator.
Go ahead, what's your point of order?
Chair, my point of order is this is not the Senator's forum. If he wants to do that, he can, he's a member of the community at this point. This is not his meeting. The gentleman on the board made his point. It is up to the chair to correct the board member. It is not the Senator's purview to do this.
You know what? I've been here a long time, buddy. You're going to get a lot of correction coming your way.
Senator.
This is the thing.
Go ahead, do you have, we have a question.
So this is the question I give to you. Okay, we need to have you guys tell the mayor and the parks to do away with the R1 water. Yeah, and the, and the water from the golf course and use freshwater. Because we never use freshwater because we was conserving them. But that pool in, in ocean, in ocean point, they're using millions of gallons while our kids are suffering because we don't have water. That's an excuse. It's an excuse. They can change them back to regular water and that's what we should be using to fix our parks. Because how many years I was here, still breaking, same ones, you know that, we was here. Same ones breaking because they cannot find the pot because the R1 water concern, that's all excuses already. We tie it. Bring them back to freshwater.
Okay, thank you. You got that one?
Got it.
All right, any other questions from the community? Any other question from the board? Seeing none? Thank you, Kehau. Okay, moving on to council member District 1. Andrea Tupola or rep?
Chair, I'd like to make a comment about this. Funny, as more of a question to Councilmember Tupola. I, I wrote her an email, her staff an email this month, this last past month, asking her if she could send a rep or, or attend the meeting because I think it's important. There's, she owns all, or she represents all of Ho'opili and several other areas in the Eva community. And we haven't seen her here. I, I look back to the January agendas or, or meeting minutes and she hasn't been here since January and maybe even longer than that. So Councilmember Tupola or your staff, please come to our meeting. You, you have a lot of people that you represent here and I think it's important that you hear what's going on here. Thank you.
Hey, got it. And I seen that email that you sent as well. With no, no correspondence on, on that. Okay, moving on to Councilmember District 9.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, neighborhood board and members of the community. Before I answer neighborhood board member Liam's question that he raised early on, I'll say thank you to the state and the city for putting. uh, I'll say thank you to the state and the city uh for putting out those speed mitigation tables on North Road and in front of Holomoo. I'm gonna let you guys know, Neighborhood Liam, Neighborhood Member Liam, this is how community works. We've been talking about it. I've been only on the council for three years. So the things that you're learning and I'm learning, we all learning together. But I'm gonna let you know that we have great representation with Senator Favella, Rep Alcos, Rep Martinez as well, Tupola. So we hear the concerns and that project, I think maybe about a month ago, we talked about what, what's the update? What's the, what's the situation with speed tables and we got it done. And just, that's just one of the ways when community come together and the board members are speaking out, you know, we can go, we can ask. Because that's what we can do. And that's what you expect me to do, is to keep pushing, keep asking. And I'm thankful to the state, the city for having that put in. So thank you. Uh, also, I want to say mahalo to the parks for paving and uh paving our parks in Kapapapui uh as well, Eva community that's coming up, uh, Sing, Pua Loa. And with that, again, we have a great community. People love Ever Beach. The people in Ever Beach are very, very helpful. When you ask, they come out. So we're gonna do beautification while that is happening because we know that the parks and every department in the city and county of Honolulu is short of manpower. And again, you heard Senator Favella talk about excuses, excuses. You know, we are walking into a problem that probably has been neglected for years. Some of you guys have been on the board for a long time. So what you're telling me is, you're speaking to the choir. I know that this stuff exists. Part of the reason why I'm here for office. You know, if a coach told me to sly on some of the fields that we have, I go, you slide first. Because I see, I played sports and I said this so many times in this board that the parks is where I grew up. Something that I'm really passionate about and really helping the administration, what they have and the resources we can, we can use to get our parks going. So I hear the concerns. Uh, we have a job fair happening here at a sink park on September 29th. And uh, we have over 20 businesses. So if you are looking for work, people watching, uh, if you hate your job, come. You know, maybe we, we got something for you. And uh, Sunday from 3:00 to 5:00 PM at Amvet's, we are doing a Maui donation drive. As of right now, uh, we have almost 15 pallets of food that's going to Maui with the help of our, our vets and other people in the community. So if you are watching or you here, uh, come down 3:00 to 5:00, drop off your stuff. We have um, a nonprofit out of Wamanaalo that will be taking this, these uh, materials that's being collected in Eva and shipping it to Maui on Monday. And then lastly, I think one of the things we can try to do, and I know you guys probably did it, but what I'm gonna do in the upcoming budget is ask Senator and Rep, maybe what we need to do is talk to the design and construction of the city and county and maybe look at repairing or fixing the, the springs that we have. I, I don't know. Because I've been asking the same questions you guys been asking. You know, and I, and I agree, maybe it is freshwater. I don't know. Maybe it is tanks. But we need to, we need to fix the problem. So with that, uh, questions?
Any questions from the board? Go, Alex?
Thanks, Augie. Appreciate the, the update. Um, I was just thinking, uh, we're talking about that Parks meeting coming up. Uh, we're gonna invite you or, or uh, Andrew, Andy?
Aaron.
Aaron. Um, if one of you could show up so we can talk, because I know you have the CIP that you put in and then Andrea put one in also. There's some overlap and we had discussions with Kayle at a meeting that I, I, I had, that we had, a couple of us had. And so just to get all the same page, it'd be really great if you could attend that. And then my, my question is if, um, so thanks for pressuring for the speed bumps. I was wondering, did you, were you able to like contact the, about the, remember, I think my question was about the task force and whatever happened to that? Did you get, did you get any? Did you get any?
Well, I did talk to Roger Morton and he had told me that, I guess there's new people. So Senator and I are gonna go talk to the, the new people around the golf course. Because I think if we can get them on board uh to help us, that would help right now until we can figure out the plan, you know, for Nut Road.
So the task force is like no longer exists at that point?
We can use what we got from, you know, the discussion. And again, it falls, again, that a lot of the responsibility is on a long strip with the private and the golf course. So uh, with the Senator's muscle and loud voice, maybe. And Senator?
No, I don't have a loud voice.
Wayne and then Senator. Go ahead, Wayne.
Hey, Councilmember Toby, how are you, bro? I'm sorry, I'm at home. I couldn't be there. Uh, what I wanted to uh bring to your attention in regards to uh, all of the coaches and all the sports guys that came tonight. This uh problem that they're uh trying to address the Neighborhood Board, I wanna ask if you would be willing to approach developers, even the military, to come forth and partner up with the community in a possible uh, get together to try and resolve some of the issues that we're having with the dirt that is need to be replaced and maybe some of these uh, pipes that need to be fixed. I think they take a lot of stuff out of the community. They come into the community, they build, they do this and they do that. Hey, right on, you know, and I'm not donning the military. I have great respect for them. I'm asking if you're willing to, to partner up with myself and the rest of the community members to approach developers and the military to partner up with us to fix the problems. Because I tried to bring this situation up last year. Nothing was done. So I'm just asking if that's, if you down for that, uh, Augie, I'm down. And you, you know me, bro. We, we, we came back and, and, and resolve this, bring some resolve to this problem, real resolve.
Absolutely. Thank you. Senator?
Yeah, um, I know Uncle David left, but I wanna thank you and the council members to vote. Um, there's only one voice, board members, um, vote to give the bus drivers or the bus operators uh, handy vans and bus uh, the money that they need for the first responders. You guys gotta understand, I worked for the city a long time. They never say no. They don't want to evacuate our, our communities, our disasters, but they never was qualified. I mean, never was listed as a first responder. We don't know what was the oversight, but I thank the council, you and uh, Andrea for bringing it up. And uh, we got it passed. But now our board members need to advocate in a letter. I'll help you guys write the resolution. But it'd be good to come from you guys that you guys agree that a, a bus operator should get the hazardous pay that they deserve. Thank you, guys.
Oh, please turn off your YouTube channel. No, 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 no. Any other questions from the board?
I have a comment, Chair. John, hey, can you, can you hear me clearly?
Alright, now I can.
Okay, maybe I gotta get closer to my computer. Uh, just to the councilman's point, uh, and to um, Board Member Kay, uh, Kayavi. We gotta start this up, uh, North Road, I'm talking about specifically. We have to start it at the federal level. So I believe representatives from um, Senator Herona's office or, or Senator, um, Rep Case's office, I think we need to start there. Maybe Senator Schatz and get them to facilitate some sort of working group. We've been talking about this for quite a while. So we've been, we're talking about it again now. And then we were redirected to talk about some, some, something for the bus. Not that I'm against the bus, but let's stay focused on, on, on point here. So I'd like to put a committee together specifically for North Road and we can reach out to the representatives. Uh, I'll spearhead that committee, but we keep talking about this. If we refer back to the meeting minutes from last month and the month before and the month before and the month before. Uh, you know, we have the Navy representatives that come to this meeting, the Marine Corps representatives. Not sure about the golf course, but we have city and county. The only thing we need is to get the Navy involved, which is federal. So how we do that, I don't know, but we can find out by working together. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll never, my hand worked it.
Okay, I got one real quick. Okay. You know, we were talking about fixing all the stuff at the park and this and that. But still, you don't have the, uh, the, any director or anybody there on, at a full time basis. It's gonna break. Then four years down the line, you go say, eh, the thing's still broken. So you go fix them. Guys are running over with the, you know, there's nobody there policing the thing. Yep, so gotta have all that into, you know, into you guys' parks meeting where. Alright, that's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, moving on. Oh, and one more thing. Get that, um, John, what John Rogers said about the, your counterpart? Can you give him the little whisper in the ear, Senator Rep?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to border water supply. Here, Kelsey? Okay. Okay, Department of Education, DOE.
Feel like I'm at a senate hearing. Hello, Randy Knack, Department of Education Facility and Operations. Thank you for your time, everyone. Um, just, uh, I'm a little tired because we were in Lahaina today, looking at the devastation and I will tell you, it is just that. I mean, it, it's, first I thought I was walking on a movie set with all the, but it's, it's terrible. Uh, we lost a school, a hundred-year-old school, Command May of Three. So we're in the process of trying to figure out the 600 students there, uh, how we're gonna make those adjustments. But um, so we're, we're progressing and thank you everyone for your support for that community. Regarding a, a number of different things, student transportation, I'm sure you've heard about it. Um, when we came out of uh, the pandemic, we were, we run about 650 drivers throughout the state. We're short 150 drivers. And at the end of this school year, we lost another 44 drivers. So we're behind about 250 drivers. Um, so it's, it's, and it's a driver issue. It's not an equipment issue. We contract that work to providers like Roberts and GTI, those folks. So about two years ago, we started a pilot program with the city OTS for those um, photo cards. And we felt that it would be a good thing to begin to incorporate mass transit into our younger folks so they can understand um, the value of mass transit. So from 9:00 to 12:00, we tried to get them to use mass transit. We had a year program and the, we had about 900 kids participate. And this year, we're tracking about 4,000 cars. We expect to be above the 9,000 level as more register for it. We have some routes that are severely impacted. Um, and unfortunately, it seems like it's on the west side, but it's really spread out through, through the state. We have a place on Kapaua on Kauai from grades K to 12. We couldn't provide any drivers and vehicles in that area. And that's concerning to us. Because first of all, they don't have the infrastructure like Honolulu for mass transit. Uh, secondly, it impacts the grades K to 8, which we try not to impact at all. Um, so it's been a, it's been a tough goal. Uh, but we're, we're working on it. We're working with the city. They're giving us an evaluation on ridership. So if we have to adjust or can adjust, we're gonna make those in about two weeks. We're trying to look at bus stops. So if we can improve the location of those bus stops. But clearly, when you put a bus stop outside your house and it's never been outside your house, we get some pushback. I'm not saying that the kids don't be, behave properly, but some are more energetic than others. Um, so we're working through that. Uh, we've had five reasons that we lose drivers. One is retirement. This is a part-time job for them, only four hours a day, two in the morning, two in the evening. We've done uh, uh, the others, uh, they're, they don't get benefits because it's only a four-hour job. Uh, pay, which we have done with a escalation on uh, their pay. And some of the companies have offered $1,000 signing bonus. But obviously, it hasn't uh, matured to what we would hope it to be. I will tell you that driver shortage is a national problem. School districts like Chicago are short 500 drivers. We talked to the White Transportation Association nationwide. There's drivers needs, CDL drivers of over, over a million. And understand, it's not only students that they move, but it's products and services throughout our country. Food and all those things doesn't always move by train. So it's a, a, a national problem. Uh, and, and be very frank with you, uh, some of the drivers have expressed concern about um, student behavior and parent behavior. Uh, the driver's number one job is to transport our kids from point A to the school. We're looking at different ways to do this. We've uh, had good discussions with Command May Schools. They do a centralized pickup point. So that could shorten our, uh, pickup time to the communities. And then they bring it to, governor is working on an exemption for us. Uh, there's called an S-class driver, a school driver, which is a much higher standard than a passenger driver and a normal CDL. So we're trying to get partial waiver up that without compromising safety for our students. Um, so that's kind of where we are. Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming out. Any questions for the board? Look, wait. Cory?
So Randy, let me ask you a question. Kapole Middle starts at eight, Kapole High starts at nine.
Right.
So the question is, in that area, and by starting as early as they do, does flexing the school schedule allow you to have buses and be able to, be able to effectively use the same bus drivers over the period of time?
So it's called an adjusted bell schedule. There's some national studies that say if high schools start later, they get more sleep. It, it's, it's better for them. Uh, but there are challenges within adjusted, there are two schools that run an adjusted bell, bell schedule. One on the Big Island and Kapole. And I talked to West Shimokawa. Yeah, that's right. Uh, and one on the Big Island. Um, there's a couple of challenges with that. In a, in a family with, if they have two or three kids, younger kids, the kid is gonna, the younger kid is gonna get home sooner than the older kids. So supervision uh, becomes a little bit of a concern. Um, the other thing is athletics and after school, the older kids will be playing school, uh, sports. So it doesn't always match up well, but we've, we've taken a look at it. The, the, the point of an adjusted bell schedule has to be seen as a benefit for the student's educational progress. This is not about doing it at the convenience of the bus schedule. So it has to have value for the student. And, and I've had a long discussion with the principal of Kapole, how they work it. He told me it took them three years, right? And then, you know, teacher's schedules have to be adjusted. And so it's not like we haven't looked at it. We're just trying to figure out how we affect it to the benefit of, of all.
Go ahead. So I have deep concerns about this and I'm sure you do as well. But right now, the city and county cannot provide the bus load. If you see the kids coming out at Campbell in the morning, the buses are full. We already have a chronic absenteeism problem. That's a problem. So we do know that we need, I mean, starting the school, you just cited it. Studies show it's better for the kids. We have already this chronic absentee problem we're trying to solve. Um, I'm deeply concerned about people that kind of got benefits that only work four hours a day too. So by extending the school hours, not only do we help the students, we help these people potentially get longer hours, get benefits and maybe that helps recruit and solve some long-term problems. So I just want to say that I, you know, if something that we can potentially looking forward to doing, I think this might kill two birds with one stone.
Yes, and, and, and we, we, we continue to, to evaluate it. What the city has asked us to do in this, this round is to give them about two weeks so they can calibrate what their loads are. Because the loads are, are shifting. Um, and you know, tough part in the morning is we're right in the, the zone of when people are going to work. We're concerned about students getting seats on that bus. If not, they're gonna be late again. Um, the city runs their transit system for the value of the total community, not just for students. So we're trying to rebalance that. But thank you very much.
Okay, Chair, go ahead.
Yes, I have two quick questions. The one is just a point of clarification about the Holo pilot program. Do students receive a discount or, or free fares on that program or are they paying the full rate?
They, we, actually the Department of Education pays for that card. Uh, what we have found in last year's test model, uh, we had not only pickup for schools, but in their spare time on weekends, because it, they can use it on weekends, we had some pretty good traffic there. So it's encouraging use of mass transit. And I think that's, we as a community, we can't keep building roads and we can't be, keep putting cars on the road. So we're, we're hopeful that it encourages mass transit use and it's, it's usable for the rail system, for Skyline.
Okay, last question, go ahead.
Yes, yeah, just one uh, follow-up on that, which is that in, in other parts of the country, they do have reduced and, and free fare. Yes, yeah, just one follow-up on that, which is that in, in other parts of the country, they do have reduced and, and free fare for, um, for students. They have a special class of cards, so I'd recommend looking into that if you haven't already. Uh, the other quick question is, you mentioned that, uh, we're contracting out for a lot of these drivers. Are those companies in breach of their contract? And if so, is the city seeking any sort of, you know, anything from them for that breach?
You know, we're, we're partners in this thing. Because let me tell you, the, the margins on mass transit is not as robust as they would like it to be. Right? The challenge we're going to have in the coming years is there's this movement to get off of internal combustion vehicles, which requires electrification of vehicles. Now, at the beginning of our pilot, the electric buses were costing about two hundred fifty thousand per bus. It's gone up to half a million per bus. Now, you as a business, you're going to have to front that money. And unless the economics work better for you, what I'm concerned is they just get out of the business. Because at some point, they've got to retire those vehicles. And it's not going to be able to use. I think the life of, for us, the bus can't be older than twelve years old. So there, I mean, the economics do not work.
Oh, okay. So. You got something?
Hi, I just heard, uh, three comments. One comment was about that, I think you said adjustable or adjusted schedule. Um, while I was here at Campbell for five and a half years, I've been at Nanakuli for, I think, eight. Um, and I think I agree with that adjusted schedule, that in Nanakuli, we have a lot of the kids who do supervision for their siblings. And out there in Nanakuli especially, they have a lot of siblings, a lot of them have a lot of siblings. And they care for them and they walk down to the elementary school and they pick them up. And if the schedule is an hour off or an hour and a half off, that's going to be a problem for the, for the families. So I do agree with that, and I think that needs to be in consideration. The second thing I want to bring up, and I, and I wish I'd like to be on point with my data, but I didn't want to be searching it on my phone. If I remember right, Leeward specifically, um, all except for Waipahu High School was affected for bus shortages, right? With Pearl City being like over, affected over two hundred-something students. I think Y, Y-N-I was a hundred and sixty-eight, Eva was only like a hundred-something, Nanakuli was sixty, I think sixty-something. But where all schools except for one was affected, right, for cutting the, um.
Statewide, everybody got a cut.
But Leeward was five out of the six high schools. When I looked at it, was the most for, for a district, right?
I look at bus numbers. So Lelehua lost, uh, I'm sorry, Melelani lost seven buses, right, for one school. Um, so I look at, at bus counts, uh, how many buses they lose. I think Nanakuli lost two, uh, Pearl City lost two, AIA lost two. But, but what we have to give consideration to is the distance from point to point to get to the schools. Because that's what's delaying them getting to school on time. We would prefer that they get to school early so they can have breakfast and it'll be a, a better day for them. But we're still adjusting counts, we're looking at loads, we're waiting for the city to get back to us and say, this is where we can recalibrate the load and we can move a bus here or stop here and there. So the first two weeks, twenty days is, is our period of adjustment. So we'll, we'll go through, through some. You know, like I said, it'd only take four more drivers for me to take care of the Pearl City AIA problem. But even that is a struggle. Last, last week, we lost two more drivers.
Okay. Your last one.
Okay, and when, when Trey asked about the, you know, enforcing contracts and you said that you guys are a partner, we know them. I want to make sure that I just mentioned one more thing, and it's not a question, it's just a comment. When we talk about national shortages, shortage problems in, in education, we talked about bus drivers, and then we talk about teachers. What I did notice, again, it, it, data that I had looked up, that I didn't look up while I was here, but I think I looked up over ten or fifteen years. What I noticed is, is there was a, a pretty steady line of teachers. I think the teachers were about the same when I look at that, that data trend. What I saw increasing was unit six, I think was increasing by like two hundred members or something like that. So it doesn't seem to be that there's a lot of shortage when you're looking for educational officers or people that you're paying a hundred thousand dollars to. What you're, what you're having shortages is for people you're paying under the hundred thousand dollars to. And so I don't need an answer, I just wanted to make sure that, that is something, when I, when I had looked at data, that I did notice that every time we looked at the shortage, it was people getting paid under a hundred thousand dollars. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and I, I think that deserves some kind of response from me. Um, you know, that goes out to bid, the bus companies bid for this business, it's a procurement process. Um, so that is the natural course of free enterprise. Right? Um, what they pay the other folks is, is from a bargaining and, you know, I, I don't involve that part of the, my business, what I'm responsible for. My job is to try to figure out how we get more bus drivers. And, and that's a tough goal.
Okay, thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Senator, you got a last question?
Just, um, there are coins, you can look into that, right? I just want a clarification, Chair. Um, there's accusations that was made, um, that I want the DOE facilities person to correct. So when I made a plea to do what I was going to do with the community's help, I didn't. So one clarification I want to know is that who had and who had put in the bill for the money, CIPs, for Campbell's football field? What person in legislation did that for all the money that we have now?
So for the point of clarification, Senator Favela was instrumental in the money that we got and the money that we going forward need. So I'll give you an example. In conference, in the budget, we had requested sixteen million for Campbell High School. And it has to do with the gender equity facility. And that's critical because it has penalties associated, not only for Campbell, but for all the other facilities that are not equity balanced. What came out of the budget, we asked for sixteen million, in conference, it came back only two million. And there is no way we can get that done for what we need to do in gender equity. So, um, yes, for, for point of order, um, point of clarification, the senator was instrumental in, in that. And the other part of his, what he asked this morning, uh, he called me this morning, I was on my way to Maui, and this is a transportation issue. And just by example, Herakoi's Point buses were late this morning, so the kids will be late. Well, we had two drivers calling sick. So it's not like I can go and grab a driver off the bench, because there's no bench for drivers. So, you know, I appreciate the call and, uh, my team is looking at how we can make those adjustments. But problem is very simple, there's not enough drivers.
All right, thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
One more comment, please.
What is that?
Just one comment, Chair.
For, for Randy?
Uh, yes, well, actually, for the clarification that was just made and to the point earlier made about parks and the neighborhood board, the role of the neighborhood board. I just want to give one final, I, I guess if I could, um, pat on the back for the board with regard to our responsibilities and duties to the community. Uh, DOE was sued under Title Nine.
What is the question, sorry about that, John?
Well, it's, it's more of a comment with regarding the clarification. DOE was sued under Title Nine. And I just want to bring up the point that that particular issue started at the Eva Neighborhood Board when we requested equity within the athletic facilities for James Campbell, James Campbell High School. Several years ago, the Education Committee and the board itself actually put together a very convincing presentation with Mr. Guy Leopard. And we pressed DOE on that issue. We showed how all the other schools were getting multiple capital improvement projects. And James Campbell was being left in the dust, literally and figuratively. Over time, again, when we pressed and pressed, legislators at that time were able to come together, work, we, we put together resolutions and we worked together as a community. And we got monies that were earmarked to get those athletic facilities upgraded. That was my major point. So this goes actually to the, to the advisory status of the Neighborhood Board. But we do interact with our legislators and hold them accountable to get things done. So we work together as a community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, Governor's Rep.
Thank you.
No, no, we're going to move on, we're going to move on, yeah, we're going to move on, sorry, just going back and forth, twenty, thirty minutes. Only got another forty minutes, uh, twenty minutes left, sorry about that. Okay, moving on to Governor's Rep. Oh, I know he's on, they're all busy right now. Department of Transportation Quarterly Report. Is she on?
No, they're gonna, Chair, they're gonna give a presentation next month. You put them on the agenda.
Got it. Moving on to Senator, uh, Senate District Nine, Senator Henry Aquino.
Hello, hi, Chairman, hello, Board of Members. My name is Nathaniel Esa and I'm representing Senator Aquino today.
Go ahead.
I do not have any report at the moment, but if you do have any questions, you can always email the Senator.
Can you please put it in the chat? The email?
Yes, I, I could, I could do that right now, I will do that right now.
All right, so if anybody has any questions, anybody got questions here? Seeing none, but anybody online or anything, uh, please send, uh, Senator, uh, there are questions or comments on his email. Okay, moving on to Senate District Twenty, Senator Kurt Fivella.
Just for a point of clarification, next month, I will be bringing the letters and the bills and the CIP bills that I had gotten for our community. Yes, we heard the community's voice, but prior to me being there, that's all it was, noise. Thank you. Anyway, just to get you guys, um, clarification, so the thirty million, thirty thousand dollars that the band got, um, for their trip, uh, did come from, uh, oh, my phone right here. So somebody was watching this on our television and heard a gentleman misspoke. So let's clarify this, okay? A false, this is what was told me in a text message because I was listening, a false that gave thirty thousand dollars under your leadership, me, right, was Mike Bell from Domino's Pizza, Solomon Askum, okay? Seiko, right, with Greg McKenzie, Boofy Haneman, Anne from HL, HLTA, and George Parrish from Ironworkers. My lobbying for that money is what I did, the best I could, that's all we could get. But when somebody comes up and say these things, you guys can call all of these guys, especially Domino's. So we have to have correction. I have no idea why Mr. Clark decided to thinking that he's going to attack, I'm not sure if he's going to run for office, but his clarifications, Chair, is wrong, okay? So I just wanted to thank Ed Stifin, and you guys can call him too, Director Ed Stifin and the Department of City and County of Honolulu, um, who gave him the map for North Road, for the speed tables, okay? That came from my office, okay? We worked with him since we put the one at Elima, on Weaver Road, North Road, that was with the kids working at Campbell. So we need to get this straight. Now, I'll give you another one, the air conditioning, if all of you guys want to visit Campbell High School, look inside there, there's a check from the Ever Beach Lions Club. Guess who unsigned them? Kurt Fivella. Okay, the other one, the fan drive, Lowe's for the fans, before this guy even got involved, I don't know where he was. Lowe's, Mrs. Perga, damn, what? A bunch of fans, well, but one money. Because I had advocate on the radio for fans, Mrs. Perga called me up and said Lowe's are going to donate fans. So that's what I'm saying, I have understanding why he's misinterpreting things that he don't know, because I've been in this community all my life. I never hear of the issues, I lived it. So I did work hard getting the air conditioners, not only me, other companies. We had the, we had alumni from Campbell, we had a different organization like Dior Horton. We had plenty of people helping with the air conditioner because multiple classes needed. But like I said, you guys can read my report, anybody wants to call those guys, go right ahead. Yes, I never get all the money for the band, but I did instrumentally got the thirty thousand, uh, thirty thousand dollars. That's the best I could do. So anybody wants to check the certifications, let me know, I'll be, send you guys a letter from the governor.
Thank you. Any question for the Senator?
Any questions, John? Any questions, John?
Uh, uh, sure, if I'm offered the opportunity, Chair, I'd, I'd like to respond to that. I think if we go back and review the video, I went over the people that actually donated.
Okay, John, I understand, no, 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 we can't, we can't have this, you guys don't, you can't have this.
He asked me, Chair, so I wanted to respond, but, uh, okay.
We can't have this.
Yeah, we're gonna have that much, sorry. Next time.
We gotta move on.
Thank you, Chair.
Sorry about that, thank you. Okay, moving on to Senator Mike Gabbard. No rep? Okay, moving on to Representative District Thirty-nine, Elijah Peric. None? District Forty, Representative Rose Martinez. All right.
Good evening, everyone. Now, it is supposed to be bedtime, but.
Thank you.
We're here, doing our community, uh, responsibility. But anyways, I would just want to reiterate the legislative update that we have done so far. Um, you know, we passed the HR one oh four regarding the Polo, uh, uh, range training facility that we are requesting to be, uh, relocated. And it's still an ongoing process that we are trying to work with the military. So hopefully, we can find a better, uh, solution to it. But I want to thank, of course, Mr. Liam Chen and Alex Dawes, who supported in passing the bill. Thank you so much. And, uh, regarding the CIPs that I have requested, um, the, the report newsletter is states, uh, specifically what are the CIPs that has I had secured during the legislative session. So far, we got, uh, two million from the CIP that I requested. The six million came from the governor's office. So, um, in the session, we, uh, got eight million for the, for the James Campbell High School. And for the Elima Intermediate, um, School, we received one point five million dollars for the planning, design, and the new building to include, uh, the Performing Arts Center and also the parking facilities for the Elima Intermediate. So after all this has been done, when, then we will request for the construction. Uh, we also secured two hundred thousand for Porkeia Elementary School for their parking in, um, traffic control improvements and parking structures. Um, so far, I co-sponsored several bills that passed and has been signed into a bill by the, by the governor. And will continue to work for the community as for the improvement of Ever Beach. So if you have any further question for me, I'll be here to answer you, answer your questions.
Okay, thank you, any question for the board? Any question for the community?
I believe none.
You got one?
Yeah, just one question. Uh, it wasn't eight million, it was two million from, uh, financing and ways and means for the CIPs. And then also another five million that we got in the budget put in by the Ways and Means Chair. So it's seven million, uh, what we had asked for in increments since I've been there, seven million each year. It was a discrepancy on the bill, on the two million, and we got that corrected. And we got to put in a budget for five million. So it's seven million dollars for the CIPs to complete the Campbell High School's football field.
Okay.
So.
Alex, go ahead.
Thanks, good to see you, Rose. Um, I was just wondering, obviously, your, your leadership on, on one of the resolutions here for the Pua Loa Range Training Facility, uh, was really good. I'm, I'm just wondering, have you engaged with any of your, uh, of your colleagues there to like continue to push this effort?
Yes, we are, and we're doing other, other steps, working on this one. Uh, we will, uh, we're not able to divulge right now, but we will let you know. What are the, um, process or what are we doing about it? Yeah, as far as with, also with the other, uh, legis, uh, my colleagues in the House.
Okay, another question from the board? Okay, any question from the community? Seeing none, thank you, Rose. Okay, moving on to Representative District Forty-one, Representative Alcos.
Hi, thank you, Chair. Um, first of all, I just wanted to, um, say that, looking at my phone, watching news now, there was fifty-three people who died at Maui. Say that, looking at my phone, watching news now, there was 53 people who died at Maui. And thousands of homes that burned. Our prayers go out to them and their family. And I just want to say that, you know, even to the first responders that really went out there and tried to save these families or tried to work and. What they had to do and we lost policemen. I'm out there as well, you know. Again, our hearts go out to their family and. Whatever we can do for them and help them out, you know, we let's come together as a community to, you know, donate and see whatever we can do to help out the people in Maui. I did want to address a situation about the parks, you know, and again, I apologize if it came out a little bit strong. As you guys know, I'm kind of passionate about the parks that we have here. And, you know, especially when you see the kids falling down and getting hurt on the park and stuff like that, but, um. I'm not, I understand that it's not your guys' problem and you guys got to come to the representative or the senators and and we got to try fix it. But we are the voice of you guys. We are the voice for the people. We are the voice for the neighborhood board. It's like you did the resolutions for the firing range, you know, you guys came up with the idea. We step up, we stand together. And that's what we're here for, we stand together with you guys. I'm not coming out to tell you guys to resolve the problems. Or to help me figure out and get to the final destination. I went, reached the city and county, wrote out letters to them. I had met up with Augie, wrote letters to him. I have had side meetings on the side. Um, on Iula Beach Parks, we had 2.7 million dollars for put bathrooms. I mean, we're doing our work on the outside. Favela doing a lot of work on the outside as well. Again, this is only a couple of months I've been in. I have a lot to learn. I just want to say thank you guys so much for the opportunity that you guys allow me to be your representative. Want to say also thank you for coming out to the Town Hall meeting that I had last week. Uh, for drugs and alcohol. And I also want to say, uh, let's see, what else I got on my. Oh, yeah. Campbell High School Football Field may be open about one month from now. The first game might be there. You know, again, there was a lot of work by everyone. Again, Senator Favela for going out there and, you know, raising up a lot of the funds. For our school and it's overdue. I just want to say thank you and I look forward in working with you guys. So use me as much as you guys can because. I represent you all. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Any question for the board? Any question for the community? Seeing none, thank you, Rep Alcos. Okay, moving on to Representative District Forty-two, Diamond Garcia. Nobody. Okay, cool. Moving on to committee reports. Uh, parks, we've got to make chairs. So as of right now for parks, we got co-chairs Rogers and Gauss. Anybody else? Okay, nobody? Education, we got Clark, Riz, and Dela Cruz. Anyone else? Okay, transportation, we got co-chairs, Gordonner, Rogers, and Gauss. Okay. Ampo, we got Rogers and Julie.
I'd like to invite Trey.
Trey?
And also I'll write you an email so that you can write to Ampo folks to put vote.
Julie and Trey. Okay. Got it?
More the better because we miss more than.
Okay, public safety, community outreach, homeless outreach would be co-chairs Clark, Gordonner, and Caevi. Anyone else? Public safety, community outreach, homeless outreach. Got it? Economic development, co-chairs Clark, Gordonner, Caevi, and Dela Cruz. Anyone else? Okay. Climate change, Dela Cruz, anyone else? Okay, foreign affairs, co-chairs, Julie and Wayne, anyone else? Okay, military affairs, affairs would be Julie, anyone else? Okay.
John, Clark.
And Clark. Yep, okay.
Mr. Chair. Uh, so as not to leave Dela Cruz alone on climate change, I'll step down from economic development and join climate change.
Okay. See you when you're not here. No, 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 no. I know you're not feeling ill or under weather, but thank you for joining us for two, Jenna. And thank you for the all that work on that resolution for the cluster home as well. Okay, moving on to announcements. Next regular board meeting scheduled for Thursday, September 14th, uh, at 7:00 PM.
Were we gonna give any reports for our committees? No?
Do you have a report?
Well, for the Parks Committee, yeah, for the Parks Committee, we're talking and we're gonna, we're gonna schedule a meeting and that should mean a letter goes out. Um, to the folks who receive the letter and it'll probably be, uh, online. It'll be a virtual meeting so that we can have a a place, but we're gonna talk. About the issues that we had today and we also, uh, before COVID, we had started. Um, uh, Parks Inspection Program, and so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. So I'm gonna, we're gonna put that together and try to start that inspection program up. And basically what that did is we just did inspection sheets and we gave them to the city and said, here's all the problems with the parks. So that's, that's, um, our Parks Report.
Thank you. Um, any other, uh, reports on the education, transportation, Ampo? You got a minute, anyone?
Transportation.
Go ahead.
Uh, there's so much. Lee Word Bike Way, uh, update. Um, if everyone knows about the Lee Word Bike Way, it should be done by the end of this year. Uh, Fort Weaver, um, Pula Beach Park to, um, um, Kila'aha Street Shared Use Path. Um, that's something that the, uh, the board, uh, wrote a resolution and got a resolution passed and got it up to the state. And, uh, they are right now, um, the design is scheduled for start in 2023 with construction to start in 2027 to build a shared use path from Pula Beach Park. To, um, um, Kila'aha. Um, also, uh. There's also on the south, uh, southbound lane at Fort Weaver, if you you go past Foodland Safeway area, there's no sidewalk going all the way down. And then it starts back up, um, at. Uh, I forgot what street, but anyway, they're they're, right now it's in design and scheduled to start 2020, uh, start designing 2024 with construction starting in 2026. To complete that sidewalk on the southbound lane, uh, going, um, Fort Weaver. I I got a lot more, but I'll try to do it next month.
No, but we also have the transportation DOT coming for the their.
Yeah, and and next month DOT, uh, uh, will come and give a, um. A presentation on Farrington Highway between Old Fort Weaver and, uh, the, um. Uh, Golf Course Road because they're gonna be modifying that road. Thank you, hope about time to to make it more lanes, safer bike lanes. Uh, sidewalks, the whole thing. So hopefully, I don't know what's happening. They changed the design from when they originally, um. Presented to us many, many years ago. And so we'll see what they're gonna do for us.
Okay, any other, uh, any other reports for any of the committees?
One, one comment, Chair.
Go ahead.
Education, Rep Alcos kind of hit on it, uh, you know, regardless of of our differences within the community with the different elected officials. At the end of the day, we have some awesome athletic facilities coming up at James Campbell High School. The football team is gonna have a brand new field within the next, uh, as Rep Alco said, uh, within the next month or so. So, uh, we'll be pushing out information on social media. But even if you don't have a student at the school, it'd be an awesome time to come out and support James Campbell High School. Their sports in general, but especially football. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, just one on, uh, Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization, just, uh, input. So right now, uh, the, um. The Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization Citizens Advisory Committee, APOCAC, um, uh, is. We're, uh, well, the whole APO is updating the 20, uh, the. Oahu Regional Transportation Plan, I'm sorry, all these acronyms, I gotta make them into words. Why do you, Oahu Regional Transportation Plan 2050, they're in the early stages of starting that process. That is our long-range transportation plan for the, it's a 25-year plan. Every five years, they update that plan. So this is, uh, right now, we're starting in the engagement process where the community can start engage. I think APO is gonna come out with a lot of, uh, things to engage and I'll try to get that word out as best I can to the community, but. Um, we've at at the CAC have been complaining that there hasn't been enough community engagement with the ORTP. It's a, it's the most important transportation plan. It's our transportation plan for Oahu. So I'll get the word on. I just want to let you know that that's happening. If you go to APO website, you can probably learn a little bit more about that if you want to research that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, 10:01. Okay, next regular board meeting would be scheduled for Thursday, September 14th, 7:00 PM. Uh, virtual webex and in person over here at the Ever Beach Library. Uh, regular board meetings are broadcast every first Sunday, 6:00 PM, and every second and fourth Friday at 10 on O'Leiloe Channel 49. Um, meetings adjourned.